Let's call the meeting of the Milletburg Plant and Commissioned Work Session by the January 14th, 2019 order. Is there anything that any commissioners would like to add before we call them, John, to his presentation? If not, then, John?
John, before you start. As I mentioned to you at your last meeting, council was considering a point of review and doing a...
You want to do that now?
...to draw up plots, yes.
Sure, sure, that's fine.
Can we do that now?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So, we have nine numbers in here for you to draw. So, do you have a preference on how, where we start, or are you going to go alphabetically, or you want me to just go down the row?
You're in charge.
All right. We'll just start right here. And, Jim, we'll need to...
(laughing).
Whichever one it is.
That's right, that's right. I haven't even gone in yet.
Stay in character, now, Connie.
I don't know what that means.
I don't know what that...
You have a one-year appointment.
There's a reason they have a whole lot when we have a one-year.
For people like us.
And we thought it was maybe meaningful.
I thought there was popcorn in there.
Yeah, Jim, you got seven?
I'm not sure what that means, but...
Can't talk seven.
No, it's a much greater one.
Position?
Just pick one, just pick one.
Yeah, what did you get?
Four.
Four.
Well, I don't know if it's a nine or six.
And we're missing Scott Stimson.
That's a good point.
That's a good point.
Which do you want it to be?
Oh, yeah.
That's a good point, that's a really good point.
You got a nine number, check this over here.
Oh, yes, it's okay, so you got a nine.
Oh, yeah, he's got the mark.
I don't want this number.
Well, you can switch with number one if you would like.
Oh, cheesy.
Okay, all right. One through three. One through three have one-year appointments and can be reappointed by the council. They can be concerned for reappointment next year. Scott Stimson was the last one. And then three.
You're a lifetime with that.
Four through six will be two years. And seven through nine is three. So...
That's probably my lifetime.
That means with a reappointment, you got four years.
I want to see...
Okay, so, and all this is standard?
With this one in mind, or just because you drew for maybe only a one-year, all it's saying is that you'll be up for reappointment next January.
So, do you understand anything?
Pardon?
Do you understand?
Yeah.
Okay, I think you were saying you didn't understand. Okay, thank you, folks. Don't do these peck on track.
You want the numbers back?
Yeah. Yeah, for me, you know, who knows?
Did anybody just say one year, one, or four?
Well, we just have to kiss, kiss up if we want.
Okay, that was my final offer.
I know.
So, if you want, it's...
No, it's, it's fine, it's...
What number do you get?
It's eight.
Okay, so Scott Stimson drew a three.
Wow, that's crazy. Okay, I'll talk with him.
If you want, I'll...
Just, no, just let it go as it is, it's fine. It's fine as it is. I had no intention of leaving anyway, you've got to throw me.
I serve at your pleasure. I have no appetite.
Go ahead.
Hard to bite your tongue?
Commissioners!
I just unplugged myself.
We have gone through the first three articles tonight, and we've got the fourth article. And remember, the first article was just all of the general stoffers did. The second article was the zones themselves, what happens on the land in one of those dimensional standards. The third article, we went through a week ago today, which, where were all the special development requirements, home occupations, fences, all that kind of stuff, and we got through that. And so now, we're in the fourth article, which is the process stuff, i.e. what you get to do in terms of reviewing applications, and how people apply, and what they apply for, and how it's handled, and all that stuff. Connie?
Well, you know, I always have questions, right?
You do.
So, before we get started on the next one, I've been thinking for the last week about some of the stuff we talked about last week. And we were really tired at the end of the night, and not complaining, because I was glad we took the time to do it. But the non-conforming is bothering me, and how we ended up with that. I don't have a problem with the non-conforming buildings and setbacks and all of that. But the comment that Kevin made about the use, and I don't know how many people that would affect, I don't think we have a whole lot of businesses that are non-conforming like that, but to me, I don't want to put them out of business. I don't know if they need to just do a conditional use permit, and that would put them in compliance, or, I guess that's my question. I, I'm struggling with that one a little bit, because I don't think anybody should lose their livelihood. But as far as the building and the setbacks, I think if they have to rebuild, they should rebuild conforming. But, anyway, I don't know.
Let me just offer some factual response. And it's absolutely up to you. The reason a use becomes non-conforming is there's been a change in thinking, or values, or desire by a community, and they adopt a new code section that says something different, so they become non-conforming. Non-conforming is allowing that use to continue, but it has this termination clause in it that if a use is discontinued for a year, or if it's destroyed, that you, either, you can't rebuild it the same way, or if it's a use that's non-conforming, it can't be reestablished. And the cold, heartless philosophy to that is, if the community changed the zoning to be this way, things need to move that way, and therefore, for something, through some calamity, or failure of business, isn't there anymore, whoever's going to take over next needs to conform. That's the philosophy behind it.
I understand.
Now, we talked about the fact that most communities don't apply that to single-family. And this draft originally said, "If a non-conforming use is damaged or destroyed by fire, other casualty, or natural disaster, such use may be restored or replaced, providing physical restoration is lawfully commenced within one year of the damage or destruction." But what that's also saying, and that has to do with a calamity, and it would allow the use to come back also. You just wouldn't have to rebuild the building, but the use can be reestablished.
Our, our new code says...
No, that's what, that's what the draft said. But last week, this group said, "Take that out."
Well, and so, I'm, I'm saying, I've thought about it, and I'm reconsidering, I don't know how the group feels. Again, we were tired at the end of it, and that was the last thing we talked about. So I don't know if anybody else thought about it, or if they're okay, and maybe I'm out there on the limb by myself again, so...
So what are you saying is okay now?
Well, for me, I, I totally agree with the building and the setbacks, all need to get conform. But as far as the use, and Kevin gave the example, and I went home and thought about it that, and I went, "Wait a minute, they would lose their livelihood, because they've been here for generations," I think, I think. So I don't know. I know that's how we have it in the old code, right? The old code says that they could continue the use. The new code, we told him at the end of last week to change it, so take that out. So, I don't know. I just kind of wanted to see...
But we had, we had, on page 79, it says continuation, "A non-conforming use may be continued, although not in conformity with the regulations of the zone in which the use is located."
Yeah, but to go with Kevin's example of Millwright Farms down there, that place burned down, they should be...
Yeah, but this says it can be continued, even though it's not in conformity.
Well, it's not in conformity, because it's not an industrial area, but I think a farm like that is industrial, because it's doing products with what they're growing and everything, so that's kind of a farm.
Couldn't this allow, allow them to keep it? Wouldn't this...
No.
No, that's, that's my point, and at the end of the...
I'm not understanding that.
That wouldn't allow them to rebuild, correct?
Yeah.
Because it is zoned for residential.
Residential.
Yeah.
It's zoned for residential, so they wouldn't...
Yeah, that's what's, that's what, that's what kind of kills me in the first place, that's farming land, it shouldn't be residential.
How does that advance?
Somebody wants to make it residential, then you can change it.
Did they ask to have a change?
Well, there must not be any farming zoning in the middle of it.
That underlied zone, I believe, is then...
It's all residential.
It's a lot of common land, a lot of land as well. I mean, it's been there for a long time. I think the biggest thing you have to be concerned with is, let's say that something goes in, and then at some point, you have development coming up around it, you now have essentially an industrial use. I mean, they're under different, but they still have, have it, and they have its location and are hired there once already. So you now have essentially, as Steve mentioned, you have, you know, it's an ag, it's, you know, most places would be considered an industrial use in the middle of your residences or...
But we're going to redraw the zoning maps, are we not?
What's that?
We're going to redraw zoning maps.
Well, it's currently, it's done even today, you know, I'm not sure what our current state, but they're already in that zone now.
So let's refresh what we think you said last week.
And John's correct, if I'm being honest.
Yeah. And that if it burned down again, they could rebuild, because it's not in an industrial zone, that's pretty much why.
Well, I don't know if so much it's not industrial, but I don't believe under our current and proposed zone, it would be allowed to stop residential use.
Right.
Because it is residential use?
It's zoned residential.
That's right, yeah, that's...
So it would go away.
That's my problem, it's a farm, it should be grown farming until somebody wants to develop it. That's just don't connect.
I don't know. Again, I may be out there by myself, I just thought about it, and I just wanted to bring it back up.
So what is the process for grandfathering now?
Well, it's automatic.
Don't tell a lie.
It's automatic.
As long as you don't change the use, or change the structure, or it doesn't burn down, then you can keep that use going on into perpetuity. Some codes build in amateurization periods, like 30 years, and if you go for 30 years, that's a deadline, and you've got to stop the use, but that's pretty rare.
So if it burned down tomorrow, and you rebuilt it exactly the way it is, that'd still be a non-conforming, right?
Oh, correct.
The use.
He'd be reestablishing the non-conforming use. I don't know if the current code allows that or not, I'd have to dive in here.
Yeah, he could rebuild it physically, the question is, does he lose the farm use? No, because you have one year to reestablish the use.
Right, right.
So, yeah, if it burned down, it could get rebuilt just as it is.
Mm-hmm.
Could he add, could he add on or change anything?
Anything you add on or change has to comply with the code.
So that's a no.
So...
Well, the new code gives us little wiggle room there.
You know, I mean, what's out there? If, if they're going to add another, you know, little barn, or a stable, or something, and it's, could be the same thing that you'd allow in a residential zone, then that would work.
So we could, okay, good. Only reason I ask is my brother, Vianaro, wrecking, burnt down in Carbalas, they had rezoned that residential all the way around it, when he bought that, it was in the county. It took him three years working with the city to rebuild. It was just, it was obscene, the rules and laws. So Connie's brought up a good, interesting situation.
Yeah, I think you can look at that problem a little bit different, because he's on a major highway, you know, that property's on a major highway.
It is.
Where, we're, we're not talking about properties, I mean, we're talking about properties right now, it's on a local archery that is, so, you know, is already surrounded by residential. So, yeah, why they didn't include that in their, you know...
I said, "Limb of Woods thinks it's a major highway now."
It goes back to the old argument, though, you move in next to a dairy, and then you start complaining about the smell.
We can let it go, but I just wanted to see if anybody else felt the same way.
Yeah, I have concerns.
Well, one of the uses we're going to talk about tonight is the process for non-conforming uses, so that's another lens through which to have this conversation for certain, as we move forward.
I'm sorry?
One of the uses we're going to talk about tonight is the non-conforming uses and the processes for that. And so that's yet another opportunity for us to look at this issue, and another lens of which to look, look at it from, through, through. Not that I'm trying to move you along, but that's on the agenda for tonight, too.
All right, so remind me of something in terms of your memory of what happened here, because my notes aren't reflecting it right now. Right now, in the draft, residential mixed-density zone and allowed use, is crop cultivation and the raising of fowl's bees and domestic farm animals subject to the standards that we set. That same provision is not in the residential low-density zone, which gets back at this farm thing. And I don't have a note saying that we wanted to put that in the low-density zone. Maybe we chose not to, because that's where all the single-family subdivisions are, so... Anyway, okay.
Something I was noticing was you have these, these zones, but you didn't have a zone for high-density. There was no zone for high-density.
Well, we've created a multi-family zone.
Okay, so we just don't have the high-density?
Right, right, yeah. We're still working off the first printing of the first draft. And so now, in a month, it's February 18th or something, your next work session, that's when I'll come back with all of this in a new draft, reflects everything you've said, and hopefully we'll walk through it and say, "Yep, that's what we want," and then we'll move to hearing.
You really think that's going to happen?
John, were you just looking?
John?
Connie, save it up!
What is the process for community knowledge of this?
This? Well, this in the hearing.
Yeah, if we do the minimum, it's a notice in the newspaper and put on the city bulletin boards. That's the minimum.
Their only input is...
Actually, though, no, we probably need to do a Measure 56 notice, I would think of this one.
That's true.
So I think we'll probably end up doing a mail notice to everyone in town. But, I mean, that's something for you to talk about. Would we be ahead to have some kind of informal open house before we move to public hearing? Just answer questions, and, you know, again, mostly just answer questions to make people aware of it, and do that, and then move to a hearing after that? Or jump right into a hearing? We haven't talked about that at all, in terms of how you'd like to approach this, or how the council would like to approach it. It's a good question, something to start thinking about.
More exposure, the better, whatever that...
When you were just talking about farm and livestock, are you looking at 3.21204?
I closed it, but I probably was.
What properties does that apply to?
It applies to the residential mixed-density zone, which is the one that's a little bit higher density than the RL. And that...
So is it...
It's that map.
Is it the rural residential 2.5?
Yeah, it's basically replacing that.
Okay, so, and everything I've got here, it's everything in grain. So, our folks that have little farms there right now, I know of one that has cattle, and he sells four or five, and I know his next-door neighbor has miniature donkeys, they all have to leave.
Yeah.
Okay. Because nobody else can do it.
Yeah, so that'd be true.
Somebody can't buy the property next door to him and do the same thing.
It's probably true. So when we get down to really understanding all these pieces a little bit better, and I know that when we walk through this to kind of craft the next draft, we're going to find some anomalies in it like that might bring back, but remember, we still need to get into the map. That's something that'll have to happen here, one of these work sessions, is finally taking these things and figuring out how we're going to apply them to a map.
I know we're growing like crazy, but it just kills me seeing us run all these farmers out, pack their stuff, and leave. And we've written it down, thank you very much.
Well, they don't have to leave, they're non-conforming.
Okay.
All right, let's take a look at Article 4, starting with application types, right past the table of contents. Let's walk through some of the highlights here. There are four basic types of applications. We covered this in the planning class, but the important thing here is to remember that they have a hierarchy of arbitrariness in the decision-making, and the higher it goes, the more involved the planning commission and council are. So there's this thing called the ministerial permits, which staff does, and it's, those are just no-brainers, super easy.
No discretion.
No discretion. And then we have the type 2, which are ministerial notices given to the neighbors.
Still no discretion.
Pretty much, little bit, slightly. But notices given to the neighbors, and they can request a hearing. And so it, it gives that option, so no neighbor loses their opportunity. Type 3 is the pure quasi-judicial changes, which are the ones that you consider with a hearing and a decision, and type 4 are the big ones, like complaint updates, or code updates, and things like that, or the remapping, where you, you will make a recommendation to the council, the council holds a hearing, and they make a decision and adopt it by ordinance. So let's just talk about those four things. Anyone have any objection to that basic nature of four layers of decision-making? Okay, that's the case. It's important for you to think about what goes into each one of these. What are the processes, what are the kinds of land uses that fall into each one? So right there on page 5, type 1, these are the ministerial ones that the staff makes the decision. And you can see what's listed there, temporary uses, sign permits, flood plain permits, greenway development permits, property line adjustments, and home occupations. Now, historically, I think the commission has seen home occupation permits. Isn't that right here?
And property line adjustments.
And property line adjustments.
No, property line adjustments are done at staff level, currently.
We were doing them before, okay.
Oh, well, the code doesn't require that.
I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just saying we were doing them.
Yeah, so...
And John has summarized these on a table on page 9 also, if you wanted to see them all laid out, which is a great table, by the way, John, I really liked that table.
That was great.
I thought home occupations were going to be allowed by right in the new version of the code.
Well, it is, they're type 1, meaning it's just ministerial process.
Yep, we set the... Well, that's basically...
So the question is, you know, what do you want to cover? What do you want to review as a planning commission, and to what degree, and what might work? So what's laid out here is property line adjustments and home occupations are suggested as being ministerial. Now, the thing about home occupations is, yes, you've looked at them, but if the standards are straightforward, we're suggesting maybe you don't even need to see them, or drag, and the other part of this is drag someone through the process. Pay a fee, take 30, 45 days, all that kind of stuff. And if we have good home occupation standards, it just may not be necessary to take a public look at it. That's a thought.
If we set the parameters, administrative staff can...
That's the theory, but you may not be comfortable with it.
Well, for one, I am. I would like to see staff level do a lot of these that are just basically cookie-stamped. It gets progress going, and again, you're talking to somebody who's a business person, and time is money, and when you've got to come in for an application, and wait another 30 days to go through a hearing, and all the complaints, and on and on, and you're listening to people that are just wanting to talk, and they don't have a clue what they're talking about, that's what I call the level that they can be answered at the counter. I've got better things to do than sit here and listen to people that don't know what they're talking about, to be blunt.
Well, I'm hearing some...
My opinion.
When it's spelled, when it's spelled out in black and white.
Falling in the type 1, is there other counterpoints to that, and would disagree with that?
As long as we have it set up.
The parameters, yeah.
We have parameters.
Yeah, okay.
From the deal.
All right, let's go with that. And then property line adjustments, those are super straightforward as well. Okay, type 2 is where, yeah, I got your notes, you're right, but anyway, the, just a little nuance here in the math brought up, but no big deal. Type 2 are where, again, staff can make a decision, but neighbors are notified, and they can bring that, ask for a hearing, it comes back to you. The three that are down there, we suggested, is partition, which you historically have seen, adjustments, which is a minor variance, basically.
That's new.
Yeah, that, that's a new process, where we don't run everybody through a variance, even if they're only talking like six inches or something.
Right.
There's a threshold where it becomes a big enough deal. So, we're suggesting adjustments fall under type 2, and then a similar use determination, where something isn't in the code, and we need to make an interpretation or a determination that something that's walking in the door is similar to something that's in the code, and we allow it, or consider it. Those are suggested as the type 2 process.
Can we go back to B, or A, for partitions? We've heard a bunch of those, and in some cases, we've made other recommendations now. Would staff be able to do the same thing?
Yes.
Under different, set different conditions and stuff, like we've been doing.
And I was also going to see if John could add a provision in here that would allow staff to send this to a hearing. So if one came in that was particularly onerous, and had a lot of judgment built into it, a lot of discretion, could we just say, "Whoa, no, we're taking this to the commission. You don't want, don't want to deal with this, move it along."
Chicken.
To some extent, yes.
That's what I was kind of leading up to.
We've had a lot of split votes.
Because some of these partitions have been really no-brainers, super, super simple. Other ones, where we've required people to draw concept plans of the area, and do right-of-way, they can be pretty complicated, and so, yeah, I'm a chicken, I would absolutely love to bump those ones up to planning commission, from staff's direction, I don't know if you wanted to bake that in or not.
I agree.
I don't care.
I agree with what you're saying.
Well, maybe you put it in, and staff's recommendation, it could go to the commission.
I would love that.
Yeah, got it.
Start there.
Good idea.
So I have a question, you said about home occupation, that you're not notifying the neighbors.
Right.
Correct.
Should the neighbors not know that that's happening? I'm just asking the question.
Yeah.
If they're neighbors, they should know.
They want to start teaching piano lessons, it's a home occupation.
That's a little different.
Than what?
Than what we have...
Manufacturing weapons ammunition?
The trucks...
Guys doing detailing in his garage.
Yeah, you know, I don't think the appliance thing would even work under the way we...
It's here, it's now, we've approved it.
Well, it's already here, so it becomes non-conforming. The thing is, you couldn't establish a new one like that. It's just, it's too heavy to be, the home occupation meeting the standards that you created in the draft here.
So you want to know the determining factor, then?
Okay.
You know, most home occupations aren't...
Onerous?
Manufacturing, or involve a lot of parts, or, you know, appliances, and that kind of stuff. Those generally are not home occupations.
Detailing cars, was it?
Yeah, detailing cars inside his garage, yeah.
Detailing cars inside the garage could work, fully contained, no outside storage, no noise order, glare, it's just inside the garage.
The fire department loves that cloud of dust in an enclosed space with water.
Sure, that's not to say they don't need to talk to the fire department about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And best ever, no neighbors complained.
So, most home occupations are going to be...
There's the key.
Most home occupations are going to be things like, you know, piano lessons, or...
Lawyers.
Lawyers.
Planners.
Planners, exactly.
You do have to be careful, because I ran up this...
John, how about the painter?
The guy who wanted to build a machine gun.
And that happens, we've just had a request for that reason. That, well, we have to go back to that. If we do have this, you've got a painter, who has two, three boys, great guy, does a great job, he's going back to the yard full of paint stuff.
But they're not doing the work there. The work's out somewhere else.
He has three different storage.
So it shouldn't be storing things on site. I think this version of the code says if you run a home-based business, you can't store stuff outside, so that would shoot it out.
Yeah. It says...
But there's nothing in here that says...
Well, here's what it says. In fact, there's two things that probably cover that. No home occupation conducted within a single family detached residence or an accessory structure shall create vibration, glare, noise, order, all that kind of stuff, but then hazards. No equipment, processes, or materials shall be used which will change the fire rating or the structure separation firewall or ventilation requirements of the structure in which it's located. So it would seem that if you had a place full of paint, it's probably going to change the fire rating. Kevin, is that not true?
That's okay. It's latex, it's not an issue.
It's latex and it's not an issue? Is it an issue?
From a fire standpoint.
What was your thing about storage, though? Off-story?
I think it says you're not allowed to store anything for your business outside where people can see it.
Not outside. You can't do it outside.
And you can't build a structure specifically to store stuff in for your business. That's not allowed either.
And so Jim was saying that he has a storage shed full of paint.
Your accessory shed, your 1200 square feet, right?
He didn't build it, he brought it in.
I'm just pointing out that all home businesses aren't as simple as a piano teacher.
Of course not.
So storage and use of yards, this is the way it ended up.
And this is a perfect example of when somebody comes in to ask for it, where staff level knows the rules and laws. This is where we ask every question under the sun in regards to a certain issue. At staff level, they know what they're talking about. We have to be retrained at each one that comes in. And this is what we're going to have in the conversation on every single one to re-educate ourselves on what needs to be done. This is why I'm just trying to put more stuff at staff level, so we don't have to be retrained. We are just volunteers. We're not professionals nor will we ever be, no matter how many lessons we go through. That's why I'm trying to keep more of the staff at staff level.
And I support your saying, but I want to remind you, that same discussion, if you started just now, we had three, four years ago, giving all this authority to fire. God is in truth.
But we don't have, and I agree with you 100%, but right now, we've got a staff here that I could, we have, we have the A team with us now. And we have the A team those answers.
You got Forrest to back us up. On stories, just so you know, it says storage of tools, equipment, and materials and display merchandise, all their activities associated with home occupation shall be contained and conducted wholly within covered and enclosed structures. So it allows it to be in an exterior.
Oh, okay, I thought there was a...
And shall not be visible from the exterior of the structure. And then there's a provision on equipment. Everything has to be done inside and that kind, oh, we hit that. But there was also one on large vehicle storage. Oh, in fact, there's, here's what, the repair and maintenance of automobiles, trucks, et cetera, shall be prohibited, which means a detailer wouldn't be allowed, because that's the maintenance of an automobile.
Well, we need to change that.
And, well, these, these doing it, it's non-conforming. Go on forever. So it's up to you.
Yeah, but the next guy that wants to do it.
And then you have large vehicle storage. Vehicles over one-ton capacity and use in conjunction shall be stored within enclosed structure on the property. The one thing here that just occurs to me that I'm going to throw out, I hate to go on back and changing this already, but what if you have a home occupation that has multiple vehicles that are less than one ton? And I can tell you, in our neighborhood, within a block of our house, we have a landscape business where all the pickups park on the street at night, and there's three or four of them. And we have a guy that installs DirecTV satellite dishes, and he has three vans that park out front. In fact, he's there open and he's working out of them all the time. I'm not amused by either of those circumstances, but there's nothing in here that speaks to the number of commercial vehicles that can be associated and parked on the street.
I thought we did.
Maybe we did. I'm not looking at...
I thought you were running a...
The current version of the code says, speaks to that, but I don't think the new version does specifically.
See, to me, now you're running into the rural piece versus a subdivision piece of property. You say, by the rural piece can't have a couple vehicles on the street?
Home-based business, you can only have one or two vehicles there.
That's a thought.
I mean, I thought we had that.
Maybe it was in there. I don't have those written, my notes with me. I'll make sure. It sounds like that's the sense, there ought to be something. Okay.
Two at most.
Hey, John.
Yeah.
How many? Two employees, three, four?
You said you'd keep only employees.
Two.
Two employees.
Two non-family.
Exactly.
Two non-family.
Two.
Well, and another thing it says is no more than two people shall be employed other than a family member instead of both family members.
It should be family members. Okay, we'll clear that up. Okay, we've got a lot of tweaking to do before this next draft comes out. Let's take a look at type three actions on page six of your draft. The, these are those that go to hearing in front of you and you make a decision. What's suggested here is variances and sign variances, conditional use permits, site development review, non-conforming uses, subdivisions with strike, planned unit development. And then Matt has brought up a suggestion here, also street vacations.
I wasn't sure where those should fit.
It's a four, because council ultimately has to approve.
Okay.
Would you also raise your question? A lot of jurisdictions, a planning commission never sees a street vacation.
Sure.
Because it has nothing to do, really to do with land use.
Sure.
So I wouldn't put it in unless...
That's usually a council action, isn't it?
Yeah. By ordinance. And it's not really a land use thing, so usually planning commissions, I mean, my experience is a lot of cities don't have a planning commission, look at street vacations. It's up to you. I don't know what you would add to it, really.
It's probably not that common here in Millersburg getting out.
I think so, too. And then another is modification of prior projects that have been approved.
You took care of that. As I read on, I found that...
Down below?
You said in each one of the implementing sections, the last line is, any changes to this go through the same process as the original, which I loved. And so you can ignore that comment up here. You've got it taken care of.
Any issue with those land or process types coming to you?
Is there anything more you guys would like to see in that group? Anything we missed? Anything you'd want to pull from the other two lists and put on here?
Well, as long as you're changing the partition to be, being one that you can push forward to us.
John said I could.
Well, because you're right, some of them are really no brainers, but others, I think it's good that we...
Yeah, others, I don't want to make those calls. I would much rather have you guys make those calls.
So as long as that's in place, that's okay with me.
The other aspect of that is if we know that it's going to be appealed, why not just bring it to the commission and out of the gate? Send it three or four weeks in the process.
Yeah.
Just get it here. Okay.
Yeah, we do make a lot of very unpopular staff calls on partitions, and so high probability of appeals on those. High probability.
Okay. Type four actions are those that go to the planning commission to make a recommendation and then council adopts. So it's the big ticket items you see at the top of page seven, comp plan, map amendments, zone map amendments, amendments of the conference of plan, text, development code amendments like we're doing now, and annexations. Okay.
John, just notice at least what you gave us, your table isn't all inclusive of what you have in here.
Right, it's not. It's more, okay, yeah, well, we need to make sure.
Now, one of the things I wanted to bring to the attention of the commission is in the type fours, the way John has this written up, and it's about a 50/50 split across the state, I think, some cities allow an applicant to come in and fill out an application for a type four, so an applicant off the street can ask for a zone change. The way John has this written, you can't do that. A member of the public isn't allowed to. They have to address the city council or planning commission, and then you guys have to authorize that to move forward, in which case you would look at staff and say, staff, go ahead and let this, you know, fellow apply.
Yeah. I would suggest that's probably wrong, or the zone map ought, definitely ought to be called out separately.
Zone map changes.
Yeah. On the others, there, the big legislative changes like a comp plan change and stuff like that, the language that's in here is pretty normal, where it can be initiated by council, planning commissioner, staff. If you'd like to have an applicant be able to propose something, that's fine, we just need to write that in here. Some jurisdictions kind of want that vetting early on by the planning commissioner, council, and whether they even want to put it on the docket and deal with something.
But if you have them do an application, you have to deal with it.
Yes.
So that's what you're saying.
This is saying that an applicant or someone coming out of the street doesn't have a right to do a zone change, is what this says. As where if we'd said they had a right to apply for one, they then have a right to that application, no matter what. We could deny it, but they have a right to apply for it. That's the subtle difference. And sometimes it makes sense. If somebody comes out the street and says they want to change the zoning to create a spaceport, you know, and they want to change the text of the code and the land use, you guys can laugh them out the door and say, no, thanks, have a nice day. And that's the vetting process that John was talking about.
Yeah, but when you get to a zone change, though, you're almost doing the land use process by deciding whether you're going to consider it or not, because it applies to one property in that case. And I think you're...
You should have a right to apply for that.
...able to run it through the land use process.
I don't agree with that with you. I'm just trying to draw the distinction.
So I'm going to strongly recommend that, at a minimum, a zone change, a property owner applicant can apply for it. But the rest of these are broad legislative things that we're suggesting a public body initiates it. That's not to say you couldn't have someone come in to you and say, would you please initiate something? And you agree, and by motion you initiate the change.
Yeah.
The process for the change. Or you could just let an applicant file an application.
I'm a little slow, but why can't somebody come in and say, I would like to change, get a zone change? How do I apply for, was that even...
Yeah, that, that needs to change to where they can apply.
Where they can?
Yeah, it's the other thing. What if a person comes in and they want to see an amendment to the development code? And they've got an idea. Can they apply for that? Or is it ahead that they just come in and talk to you and you say, yeah, that's a good idea? And by motion, you say, we initiate that.
I was a little worried about that. Does the applicant still pay for it if they initiate it?
Or...
Yeah, well, that's, one of the differences is no. If it's initiated by one of the public bodies, there's no application.
And the city pays for it.
Right.
So what you're trying to do is get, avoid somebody just coming in and saying, hey, I would like to get a zone change down here?
Oh, I'm not trying to avoid it. I'm just making sure you understand the distinction of how this is written.
No, that process, just come in and say, I would like one, and so you got to do one?
It's, again, it's, half the cities do this, half of them don't. Some cities allow anyone to come in out the street and request a zone text change or zone text amendment.
You mean by filing an application?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And then that would go through.
Oh, the application would still come through you, absolutely. And you can still say yes or no. It's just a question of whether or not they make an application for it. And I think an important distinction is if they make an application, they pay for it. And that's usually a very expensive process, $6,000, $7,000. John's version of the code, right, would then put that burden on the city, and the city would have, if the city initiated, the city would pay for it.
But suppose a landowner wanted it, how are they going to get it done if they're waiting for the city? Why would we not allow a landowner to apply for a zone change?
I think you should. I clearly think, in the case of a zone change, this language needs to change. Really, the question, though, is the other stuff here.
Text amendments and comp plan changes, map order.
What's a text amendment?
It's what we're doing right now.
I mean, somebody comes in and the commercial zone doesn't allow spray booths for auto painting, and they say, well, I want to do auto painting. And we at the counter say, well, the only way you have to do that is to approach these folks and ask them for an initiation to change that, to add auto body spray painting to the commercial zone.
That works for me.
And then you would initiate it, but the way this is written, the city pays for it. Okay?
Well, I'd like to see it put in so they pay for it.
Yeah. If they want it, they pay it.
If it's worthwhile.
Yeah, it's to their benefit.
If it's to their benefit.
Absolutely.
It would change it citywide. You can't allow auto spray painting on this one property and no others. You would have to change the uses in that zone, which would imply citywide, for sure. And that's one of the reasons it's legislative.
Right.
And then it would become a legislative and not a quasi-judicial. I love how you drew that distinction, by the way.
So there's some sense that we ought to say a property owner can initiate it, but it's through an application with the appropriate filing chain, in their expense.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because to me, it's up to them to kind of research what can and can't be done and all that, so...
But they would certainly have to justify that, yeah. And here's why it doesn't cause any harm, because that's part of the criteria, that they have to give us a narrative to say, citywide, here's why this wouldn't cause any harm.
Right.
And they'd have to say, there's no commercial next to any residential, or buffers are adequate or something. They'd have to fill in that.
Okay.
Agree with that.
Got it. Going on to expiration of approval and time extensions. We're just adding some detail that really doesn't exist in the code now. When you grant an approval, how long is it good for? In some cases, these things will just run with the property forever. Many cities cut it off at one year. Some do two, it's written to be two. And the reason for putting a limit on it is if a person goes through a process, doesn't get, or gets the decision, but then doesn't use that decision, circumstances may change to where you might have made another decision a couple of years down the road. So it's sort of saying to people, put up or shut up. You've got two years to build what you applied for, otherwise it's expired. They'd have to apply again.
Well, and type one actions, to me, aren't long-term, take a long time to do type of things, so I'd give them a year.
You see this a lot with subdivisions, especially. People will do a subdivision and sit on it, because they really only want to boost their resale value anyway.
Right.
But they don't want to go through the expense of building the streets and putting in the infrastructure, so they then market that property with a subdivision map on top of it, and it could take years to sell it.
Correct.
And then by the time they build it out, it's very outdated and doesn't match the current standards at all. Very common.
I'm in favor of a timeline, but I just don't know.
Two years.
Two years.
Two years, a compromise between...
Well, I think two years.
I don't think one is enough. I don't think one year is enough. I mean, if you're having to deal with DSO and whatnot, you know, one year's not...
12 years.
Ed doesn't know anything about that.
No, I don't think one year is enough.
Might not be enough either.
Got to deal with the state 12 years.
12 years. During the recession, cities were facing a subdivision thing, where subdivisions all over the state had been approved, given preliminary approval, and you have one year to start filing the plaques on those. Nobody was filing plaques because the economy had gone to pot. And so just this rush of applicants coming in and asking for time extensions, it ended up a number of cities just passed resolutions just with blanket extensions, so like five years for every application.
The state of California did that for every single map in the entire state, they extended it.
Wow, no kidding.
Yeah. Extended it from two years to 10.
Let's hope we never get into that again. Yeah.
Well, how about two years and a one-year extension?
Yeah, you can grant the extensions for one year, and then it says no more than two extensions.
For a total of three. If I read that right.
If one extension, one year extension.
I'm sorry, you're correct. Yeah, two years and then two, one-year extensions, so a total of four years.
Total of four years, you got it done.
But you have to ask the planning commission for permission twice.
So no more than two, one-year extensions?
Yes.
That's the way this is written.
So the one years.
Okay. There's the draft. Okay, it makes a point here, which is the kind of thing that we have to write into these to make sure we cover our tail in terms of understanding the responsibility that a developer or an applicant has, a person that's building. It's just because they get the land use action, there's still a whole bunch of other things they have to do. So this clarifies what needs to be done. One, you need to get a building permit in order to carry forward as required, a number of things. So it's just kind of reflecting that. Manufacturing home parks, you have to actually follow the standards for that, specific uses. You exercise it within the allotted time limit. Part of this is what's called vesting, which is where they actually have started the work, which means that that timeframe has been met. What does it take to start that timeframe and get it going? So this is the language that just helps create some clarity in case there's disagreement over the timeframes and the requirements. Okay? And we have the table, which we will update.
Good table.
A table. And then we get into the actual types of applications. So this is gonna be a bit tedious walking through these. Actually, these are pretty much the same language that you have now. The property line adjustment. You have two lots, they have a line in between them, and you're moving that line. So you still have two lots when you get done. The only thing that we look at is, does the lot that's getting smaller still meet the max, the minimum lot size in the minimum dimensional standards? That's basically all that we look at.
Can it be more than one of those property lines?
One property.
Just one?
Well, you could actually do two, as long as you still have two lots. You're not creating a third lot.
You can move as many lines as you like, as long as you have the same amount of lots you started with.
Yeah.
Right. Because I might have enough where I can have two more lots, but I want to move mine up a little bit to take part of one of those.
Oh, yeah, that's okay.
Exactly. Also, this is used to extinguish lot lines that exist. If you're gonna take two lots, turn them into one, you walk through this.
Actually, with its written, it doesn't say that.
I know.
And I was gonna ask you about that. Because a lot of jurisdictions use this as a tool to consolidate.
Well, actually, that statute, that statute is that you have to go through a local adjustment process to extinguish a lot.
Well, this says, does not create or reduce the number of lots.
Yeah, so that needs to change because you could reduce the number of lots from two to one.
You can use this as a tool to lot consolidate, but not more than that. Not more than what John just said. You can't go from five lots to one. I don't think.
I'll make sure. I'm gonna make sure it reflects statute. Actually, I think you can.
Can you?
Why not? Why couldn't you go from three to one?
Well, usually, that's a higher level discretionary process called the lot consolidation, which I didn't see in this, but...
Because it's not. It follows into this. I think you can extinguish more than one lot.
Ask six county surveyors, you're gonna get six different answers.
It's true. This is a point we need to be clear on. So we'll make sure it complies with state law. I'm gonna bring it back to you. Okay? Home occupation process. It just simply says, you fill out the application form, the fee, and it walks through this. And actually, the way this is written, we probably don't even need it in here so much if we're going to allow them as a type 1 ministerial decision. It probably has too much language.
I thought we weren't gonna have them as a type 1 ministerial, unless they wanted more intensive uses. But I thought they could just do it by right, not even come to the city, just go ahead.
What do you think?
If a book publisher works out of her garage, or her home office, then let her do it.
So this is drafted, so they come in here and they get a home occupation permit. Where we review it, say, yep, what you're doing complies with the home occupation standards. And they get a little signed-off thing.
And they pay for it.
Yeah, there'd be some cost, maybe 50 bucks or something, not too much. What Kevin suggested, suggesting is no permit at all. They just go do it. And if we find that they're not complying with code, then it becomes an enforcement issue, and we go take care of it. Six of one, half a dozen of another.
Not complying, that's told in what way?
Well, they have seven employees, and they're parking two, four-ton trucks out there.
We've got the section for home occupation in here that says, you can't have more than one car, you can't store anything outside, you can't do this, you can't do that. As long as they're meeting all those, they don't ever have to come to the city and get permission. Is one of the things we're suggesting could be an opportunity.
Yeah, just take it out. I would create a brochure, as we would with many of these things, that you can hand out to people, the home occupation standards, to help folks know what can and can't be done.
Anything that they don't have to have an application or a permit for needs to have, needs to have a flyer.
You can use a permit to your own benefit because you might be able to use that to identify who's running that operation.
That's true, too. That's true, too.
You don't know. You don't know who to go after, who to contact, or who to say.
There's no right answer. It's really what the commission would like. John doesn't care which way you go.
You could just go after the property owner.
I'm okay with it, but I think I'd like to relook at what our criteria was for for it.
So when it comes back in the draft, where we've refined all that down based on your comments, you'll see that and have another chance.
Another crack, I think, about permits.
Because right now, we don't have a business license, but we're making them do the home occupation.
Yeah, yeah.
And I know that that's a major contention between legal, but I don't disagree with that. But we make them do this. So to me, that doesn't satisfy.
I think it's what a snack thing. I mean, do you wanna, to know, I was just talking, we believe, what I did talk about, there would be some, so piano teachers, and maybe some.
You're thinking two tiers? If you're this tier, with zero impacts whatsoever, go for it. No permit needed. But if you're auto detailing in your garage, which you can't do.
Or you have an employee.
Or you have an employee, maybe that triggers the need to come into the city and, yeah, take a look at parking and everything else.
That sounds like a good idea.
Rather not issue permits to everybody, and just kind of work out.
Yeah.
Ninety-nine percent of the people aren't gonna come in and get a permit anyway. They're gonna wait.
That's very true.
Exactly.
Tell the neighbors.
Okay. And you know what constitutes it? I mean, if I, maybe I could be working out of my house, in my job. Sure you could. But I would never tell you that.
That never happens.
But we'd see the sweeper. It's all right, we're gonna be checked it on you now, Mark.
I don't usually sit in the streets.
Did you separate garbage in your?
Make sure you don't have 40 garbage.
In your garage?
You have the recycling list.
City of West Lynn, as with many cities, has business licenses. And so I do a lot of this economic development. I manage West Lynn's economic development portfolio. And we did an analysis to find out how many home-based businesses had business licenses. Eight hundred eight. It was just amazing, the number.
How many don't that are doing it?
How many don't?
Probably three times.
Probably three times. Three hundred eight home-based businesses.
But then it's hard to prove if that's really a home business. If they say, this is my nephew that comes over here every Tuesday to give a piano lesson to.
This is where you get into kind of a complaint-driven enforcement.
Right.
You know, we're not zoning Gestapo. We're not gonna go out there and look up, find these things. But if someone complains, we're looking.
Like the fellow who's wholesaling cars up here. That would then be an enforcement action.
Okay, right. Two tiers. Simple stuff, no permit. Bigger stuff, a permit. Got it. Partitions. And the standards for that are back in the, in Article 3. So this is just the process. So, you know, things like those standards for serial partitioning, where people are doing it every year, that kind of thing. That's all back in that section. We've covered that. This is just the process, which lays out, it says it's handled as a type 2 process. Here's the requirements for what has to go on the application form, and the criteria. And remember, staff reviews these as a type 2, which means that neighbors are notified, but, and they can ask for a hearing.
But this is what Matt was asking, that you had the ability to push it to us.
He'll write that in here, into this section right here. He'll write that in.
No, that needs to be written in here.
I have a question on applicability of the partition. A partition is required for any land division which creates two or three parcels in any calendar year.
Right. That's state law.
Why is a calendar year there?
Yeah.
For the serial.
Ancient history, that's embedded in state law.
Yeah, it's state law.
Yeah. So your subdivision, and especially your partition standards, are tied to calendar year. And that's what creates that serial partition issue, where a person could go and take a piece of property, divide it into three lots on December 31st, come back on January 2nd, divide each of those into three lots, and you've got a nine-lot subdivision without going through a subdivision process.
With no infrastructure.
And they can do that?
Yeah.
I thought they didn't want that.
No, no. So we created a way to not do that. It's built in here. It basically says, if it looks like a duck, it smells like a duck, we treat it like a duck. And they have to go through a subdivision process. Okay? So there's that.
Don't they even put that, well, we have in the past, for, for reasons of doing it is, can't do it.
Okay. Rest of that's just very straightforward, I think. Unless you have questions.
I thought there was a criterion missing, but you saw, like...
Yeah, I threw it in.
We can talk about that later.
Okay, then we get into adjustment, the next page. And these are these minor types of applications, again, that are, we have the authority to do fudge factor kind of adjustments.
And oftentimes, you'll see this with another application. You're gonna see a site plan review and an adjustment, or a subdivision and an adjustment. And you're gonna see them together oftentimes. So even though this could be at a staff level, if it comes in with a site development review, which is a planning commission type 3, we're gonna marry this with that, and you will see it, because it's married to a type 3.
But it says here, on page 17C, the adjustment does not expand or reduce a quantifiable standard by more than 10%, in the minimum necessary to achieve the purpose. Where you see things like this?
Parking.
Oh, yeah. Or it's like when you actually get out on a surveyor on a property and discover a really big rock, or something that's, an old corner pin that wasn't in the right spot, and they need to adjust that. It's not worth filing a new application and coming back through the process.
And it wouldn't meet the standards for variance.
Right.
Usually. So this gives them a little bit of wiggle room.
Any objections to that? Yeah, we already talked about particulars, but this is the process for it.
So that doesn't adjust it below the 10,000 per foot, but?
No.
Okay.
It could.
Well, only if, okay, let's just, an example. You've approved a subdivision. Of course, that's a preliminary approval. And then they have to do a plat and bring the plat in. Well, what, in that time is when the surveyors are on the property, and they're actually setting the corner pins, and stuff like that. And if it's discovered there was an old surveying err or something, where they need to move something over, so suddenly something, instead of 10,000, ends up being 9,980, we can approve that.
So what's the variance? You can approve down to?
It shows you. 10%.
So it'd be 100 square feet. Yeah. A thousand square feet. But we wouldn't do it. Again, it's, it's also the minimum variance, or the minimum adjustment necessary. So a person couldn't walk in and say, hey, I want a 9,000 square foot lot. There has to be an issue, and it has to be the minimum wiggle limit of the line to accommodate the issue. That's what it was. So no, you're not gonna find people using this to create 9,000 square foot lots.
But that makes it non-conforming. From black and white, that makes it non-conforming.
No, it still, well...
Yes.
Yes, it does.
But this new adjustment process gives a little bit of wiggle room to our strict standards, that's all. Without the need to go through, down the variance route.
Again, it's minor.
Can I give you about an example here that we may have right now? There was a subdivision that was approved. There was a parking line with an adjacent corner where there was an issue, where the fence was, the parking line actually is. Developers talked to, talked to the park manager, they're trying to get this resolved, but they also talked to me and I'm mad about, how can we move forward? We'll try to adjust all over the lot lines as much as possible, that we still try to meet all the dimensions and everything because of this issue that came up after that. We might have some issues along that. We'll keep talking about it, but I think this is a situation that we end up like that, where we could have a couple of lots where they're dimensional.
But there's singular cases, you're not setting forth a precedent.
Oh, not at all.
We're not even on variance to say this is okay.
Right. This is just a singular, okay.
This is really a provision to try and stop me from bringing stuff to you guys, where you all look at me and say, why did you even bring this to us? This is so minor and ridiculous. Okay, well, that's what this is for. So at the staff level, we can take care of, you know, minor and ridiculous.
Okay. Page 18, variance. And again, this is process. It says it's coming to you as a type 3 review. Talks about what is applicable, and it talks about the criterion. These are the same basic criterion that you have today. Exceptional or extraordinary circumstances apply, which do not apply to other properties in the area. Such variance is necessary to the preservation enjoyment of a substantial property right that others in the area have. C, the authorization will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other properties. D, special conditions and circumstances do not result from the negligent or knowing violation of this code by the applicant. And the variance requested is the minimum variance which alleviates the hardship. Those are very standard variance criteria. Any issues with those?
So we're saying if it's circumstances created by the applicant, then it's...
Can't do it. Can't do variance.
Yeah, the other thing, I gotta throw this in here, the language, the self-imposed hardship.
Yeah, make that, yes, make that real clear.
Yeah. Seventy percent of the people at the front counter asking for variance are because they want to. There's nothing stopping them from complying. They just don't want to comply. And this line stops them from doing that, yeah.
This has been a huge one, contention around this, which you've put all time. Hopefully, you're all buying into what you're hearing. You're not speaking out the, hopefully, real words. This has been a big deal, I mean, for a long time.
It's split us. It has split us. It's been a split vote pretty much.
You're in the same station, understand and agree with what John's saying?
Well, I think the wiggle room for our interpretation of the code is, I think there's one provision of neighbors. And, I mean, that, to me, is the only subjective criteria that gives us any wiggle room with a variance.
Well, I think there's quite a few in here that have some wiggle room. Whether it's causing injury to the neighbors, that's, gives you some discretion, for sure.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, is that type of neighbor type.
Well, again, none of this is new. These criteria existed in the code today. They weren't enforced before, is I think what you're trying to say. But they've always been there.
I think as long as it's spelled out clearly, it's self-imposed hardship. That's a pretty logical point.
Yeah, I think, I think we've been negligent on that.
I think we were split on it. I don't know that we were negligent, but I know we were split on it.
We had some good battles.
Yeah, I mean...
Most of our decisions have been variances until you got here.
And we haven't seen any since.
Because we talk people out of them.
That's right. That's right.
They're helping find another way to get what they want, or saying it's just not gonna fly.
Or show them the criteria, and say, you can't satisfy these, don't even bother bringing it forward. Yeah. The criteria that already existed. We didn't make them up.
I mean, is there a long list of reasons for a variance that people would?
No, most people who come in want a variance because they want a bigger workshop. And there's no reason for it, except for that it's better for them. They happen to have four RVs. Why can't they have a four RV workshop? Well, because the code doesn't let you. Well, I want a variance. Well, no, you can't do a variance for self-imposed.
I mean, certainly.
Hardly got right with you.
Yeah. Yeah. We hear that a lot. We hear that a lot.
So changing the driveway?
Builder told him.
Well, would be, but the code says you can't. So you can't use a variance for that. Variance can't be used as a tool.
Okay.
In that case.
Or a sales tool.
I mean, not always. I want to be clear. If they had a big stream going in front of their lot, and they couldn't put a driveway in there, and so they needed a second driveway for some reason, because of some hardship on the ground, a big rock, a stream, fine, no problem. But if it's just because I want to, and you've got a big square lot with full street frontage, then no.
How about safety? Is that a reason for a variance?
Could be. Depends on how, you know, what the circumstances are.
Well, actually, I'm thinking about it myself. My house on Woods Road, I've almost got hit a half a dozen times pulling out of there backwards. I'm thinking about putting a circle driveway in, so I can pull in and go out forward.
Yeah, and if you show...
And that's a safety issue.
You show that there's a measurable site distance problem, and some history, maybe get some endorsement from the sheriff's office or something to it.
But that same condition exists for everybody on Woods Road.
Well, yeah, absolutely. Well, most have to.
That wouldn't make the criteria for a finding.
That's a hazard we live under.
You wouldn't meet the criteria.
There's already circle driveways on there, though.
That's why I was actually...
That's why it shouldn't be a variance.
Fifty percent, I believe fifty percent of the frontage for parking.
You can fix that.
There you go.
Two 12-foot driveways.
You just need to back into your driveway.
There you go. Stop on Woods and back up. Good idea.
Or put a hammerhead in it.
Get back to your shop.
No.
No hammerheads.
Oh, come on.
No, I don't. I don't.
Get a drone.
So naturally, go through all that.
All right, conditional use.
Thank you, sir.
We're gonna get out of here before 9:00. Somehow.
We're still gonna get that.
Never conditional use, as it says here, it's generally acceptable as a land use activity, but due to certain aspects of the activity, conditions need to be, might need to be attached to it to help mitigate impacts. That's what a conditional use says. So it's those things like a church in a residential zone, where traffic, lights, glare, screaming children, whatever, might create impacts, and it might make some sense to attach conditions to mitigate those impacts. The decision criteria are pretty straightforward on that. Matt did point out to me, I left out the submittal requirement section, which is exactly the same as for the variance and stuff like that. So it'll make, you know, that'll get...
Easy fix.
Tucked in. Okay. Site development review, which we require for most commercial and industrial developments. And so there's, the other rule here is provide a process to review development proposals, ensure safe, et cetera, et cetera, resolve conflicts that may arise between developments and adjacent uses. Site development review is always an interesting animal, because it's where you have a commercial developer that's meeting all the code requirements. So this takes it to a level of saying, is there anything that they are designing within the code that's still, we ought to take a look at? Like, maybe where are driveways located? I mean, they put it in accordance with the code, but you might find, and the neighbors might find, and Janelle might say, boy, that driveway really needs to be over here instead for safety reasons, or something. So you have an opportunity to go through and look at those things.
And apply discretion.
And apply some discretion in these cases. Some jurisdictions don't require for commercial or industrial, because they see it as being a barrier to business, because it adds a layer of time and processing cost and uncertainty. But most jurisdictions do require for commercial and industrial. And you do now. This really isn't a change. Issues? Okay. Similar uses, page 24. Same deal. This is where we can determine that this new thing that someone chose, showed up with, like a drone airport or something, I don't know. And actually, I'll tell you, all over the state, I told you this, is that when people first started proposing drive-up coffee kiosks, no code had them.
Right.
So there was a lot of interpretation in terms of how that fit in and how it worked. Things like that happened. They had a hard time having the code. They have a hard time having the code keep up with the market and innovation. This gives the capability to kind of update it as we go. And whenever we would identify a similar use, that then becomes part of the to-do list for the next code update.
Oh, sure.
All those things, then we get wrapped in when we update code. Okay.
We do have a drone airport.
Seriously?
Seriously. In this open field, it's a model fighter plane, yee. But you can do drones there, too. We got one.
Yep. Cool. Page 25 is the process for non-conforming uses, which basically is when it involves a change in the use, a re-establishment, and especially the extensions that we talked about earlier. So it lays out the process and the decision criteria that could be used.
One of the things that threw me for a loop in here, John, and I thought it did merit discussion with everybody, is you added the word continued in here, continued use, and you had it in a couple different places. Is it your intention that anybody who's non-conforming is instantly required to come in and get an application to continue doing their non-conforming use? Okay.
I'm not sure why the word continues.
It threw me for a loop.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look.
I wasn't sure if that required a permit.
No, non-conforming uses could exist in perpetuity.
Oh, sure, sure, that's what I thought.
That's the intent. This is just if a person wants to do something different with it, especially that extension in the case of something getting destroyed.
And I didn't know if you want to talk about the criteria B.
Yeah, well, that's, that's a good one. Notice criteria B, and Matt doesn't like it. Says a change in use to another non-conforming use may be permitted if it's of the same or less intensity of use. That's an interesting question. In fact, it kind of runs contrary to the discussion we had earlier. This would be that you had a non-conforming use, which is...
Strip club.
Huh?
Strip club.
Yeah, the strip club.
Now they want to be a bar.
And they want to turn it into a, they want to turn it into what?
A bar.
A bar, okay. So it has similar characteristics to some degree, same traffic and parking demands, they might change the sign. Would it be okay to change the use to another use? And this would be a way which that could be considered by you. Or would the strip club closes up?
I was thinking of Tuolton and Jigglers, and the absolute nightmare they went through to try and shut that thing down. And this would have let it continue.
And before that in Tuolton, it was the QT.
I remember that, too, that's right.
Not that I knew it was there, but, um, yeah, you drove by it a lot. So this would allow a change of use, a non-conforming use to another use. It wasn't any more intense.
What about destruction? So it's destroyed, and then you decide to change it to something else?
Yeah, see, this, this is where it gets messy.
That's kind of what happened at the powder coating outfit.
We're switched over to another use.
And you can't restrict freedom of expression, right?
That's right. Relative to strip clubs and adult books laws.
Well, I only brought this up because if something's non-conforming, and then they're changing the use, that's the one opportunity we have to say, "No, now you have to conform with our code." And to say that you were a strip club, and now you want to do asphalt batch, you know, cycling, then why in the world would we let that happen?
Why wouldn't you if it was in...
But it says we have the opportunity to allow it. And I think we should, so when Millwright burns down, if they wanted to change their farming operation to another farming operation, we could allow it, the way this is written.
Yeah, well, in fact, you can go to the same use.
Well, no, this is a diff, it would be a different use.
So if it's a, it's something different use.
A different commercial use in the same industry.
As long as you find that it's not having any more impact than the prior one did.
You're giving us the opportunity to approve that, that's all.
It does, it gives you the opportunity to approve it.
I want that opportunity.
Yep.
That's it.
Case-by-case basis, you know?
Good.
Can we vote on that?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I just said I wanted it.
Don't you write so quickly, John.
What? Show of hands?
It may be permitted.
Connie?
Yeah?
Well, what, what is your suggestion then?
Well, I want it taken out.
You want to?
What?
As it's written?
No, I want it taken out.
She doesn't want to allow it to change.
I, I want the non-conforming gone.
Explain why.
You mean criteria B or the entire section? Okay, okay.
B.
Yeah.
Well, let's do a show of hands.
It's an idea that public policy is the use needs ultimately to go away. That's pretty strict non-conforming provision. So every time that you give the authority to perpetuate it in some way, it's saying public policy is kinder and gentler than that strict standard. A lot of cities absolutely stick with a strict standard. You burn down, you close the use, you're out of there. Whatever you build now has to comply.
Well, we didn't have the opportunity to say no.
I just don't think we're thinking of all the, all the little things that could be. I mean, we're thinking of a strip club versus bar, but it could be...
And what's the difference?
Something a little less intense that we might want to weigh in on. And, and agree to it.
Well, the fact that we have the opportunity to allow it, we also have the opportunity to say no.
That's right. I'm agreeing with you, I think.
Well, I'm not sure that's, I'm not sure that's true, Dennis, not the way this is written, because this is a criteria. And so if somebody had a yarn store next to a neighborhood, very innocuous use, very low impact whatsoever, but now they want to sell that, it's still operating, but they want to sell it to somebody who's, who is selling used cars. This criteria wouldn't give you the ability to say no. As long as you could prove, if the applicant could prove that the impacts for his new use are the same as the yarn shop, then you'd have to approve it, because he met the standard of this, of this criteria.
I agree, if he could meet it with that, but I don't think he could.
Well, fair enough, fair enough. And you can certainly argue the merits of his discussion, of his conversation, absolutely, you're right. That's true.
He'd have to match a bunch of criteria, too, parking, what goes along with all that, too.
The applicant would have the burden of that proof, you're absolutely right, yeah.
They're knitting cartozes.
And you could certainly call BS on the applicant's narrative, you're absolutely right.
Just a procedural question. I know most of the time, code language may not be used. It's either allowed or not, it has to be a shall.
Yeah, it should be, shall be permitted if, if it's of the same or less intensity.
I don't think that's what's written right now.
Well, now it says may. If it says shall, I don't want it.
Yeah, I don't want it.
If it says may, I do.
I don't think you can, code language was correct.
That's gray area.
But, but the shall means that you need that criteria.
Correct.
Well, I'm getting the consensus that we want the ability to say no, if we choose so.
That's where that criterion, it says shall be permitted if it has the same or less intensity of use. And that'd be up to you to decide if it had the same or less intensity.
So if the applicant provides...
So a strip club to a bar.
The applicant would try, would make their case.
Pretty much, yeah.
And it'd be up for you to judge that.
So a strip club to a bar would be somewhat of an equal.
Probably so.
Probably.
But a yarn shop and a...
Used car sales.
Used car sales, or even auto parts, probably isn't.
Wouldn't, correct.
And it's not because of traffic in that case, it's almost more character, if you write that in.
Outdoor storage, yeah, it's a different, yeah. You have, you have more than enough reasons to deny it, but the applicant could try to prove that, sure.
But what do we hang our hat on to be able to deny it?
It may be the criteria.
Yeah.
It's hard to judge.
That's, that's, if the city is a judge, is, did this fact meet this criteria?
Okay. Then I'm okay with it.
It, it's certainly subjective, because the applicant's giving you paperwork to say, "Yes, I do." You're saying, "No, you don't," but that's okay, you're allowed to disagree with the applicant's narrative. You're allowed to disagree with staff's narrative, too, if you want, that's fine.
And so, you know, if you buy the five, you can say, "Yes, they did meet it," or say "No," and it's either allowed or denied, it's a fine matter.
That's right.
We are half done.
So you're changing it to shall, you're giving it a maybe?
Yeah, it is the same shall, we call it.
Okay, next page. Subdivisions and planning unit developments, we know PUD's coming out of that. So these are the standards for the application. This is probably, you know, there's two parts of this that are really important to all of us, and one is, what do we expect them to submit in terms of their application? And I think this is all standard kind of things that any jurisdiction requires, and certainly this jurisdiction has always required it, which is the name, the gross acreage, each lot, directions of drainage, grade, streets, their names, et cetera, approximate grade, radius curve. Actually, you don't even have to do names, that's...
Don't have to.
Yeah. I wouldn't require names upfront, because they're probably going to want to name the streets after each one of you at the end of it, in the approval or something, so.
Yeah, this needed retooled a little bit, because there, there wasn't applications submittal requirements. They seem to all be mixed in here, but that's, that's a finer thing.
We can, we can straighten that out.
Yeah.
So those are all script for the contour lines. Janelle, is there anything else on this that you want?
Oh, those are the tenets.
Okay, because I know there's probably more on infrastructure.
John, was it your intent?
I'll ask a lot of that upfront at this stage, though.
Sure. Um, was it your intent to, that they had to show phasing on the tentative maps at this stage as well? Because you talked about phasing a lot in the final plans, but up here, it's not mentioned at all, and I, I would much rather see that at the tentative level. Matter of fact, I would like this code to explain, if you change your phasing, here's what you have to do. Is that a staff level review, or does it have to come back to these folks, because they saw the phasing? I would love to see the phasing at the tentative level, always.
We always had that before, right?
Yes, but the way this code is written, it's not expressly written in. When we get back to the final map section, it gets really important, because he says that you're allowed to record your first phase of the map, and then it's vested for 10 years. Well, if you didn't show any phasing at the tentative level, and you tried to come in and record three lots for your model homes as a way to extend your map, but you had no phasing as a planner, I don't know what to do at that point. How do I show phasing if you didn't show it at your tentative level? I would just love to see it to be one of the requirements. And then, if they didn't show any phasing, and then they try to argue for it later on, we could say, "Nope, back to the commission with you, you got to show phasing." It's a minor map provision or something.
We're not sure phasing's in it. Any objections?
I have a question with our criteria for 10,000 square foot lots. What is the difference between a subdivision and a PUD?
Well, we're getting rid of PUDs.
We're getting rid of the PUD.
We're bouncing them. You guys hated PUDs, they're, they're gone. We heard you.
For strike most of page 27.
That's right.
All right, then we have the decision criteria, which are pretty straightforward, doesn't meet the standards, is the bottom line, doesn't meet the standards. It's the standards for subdivision, which were back in Article 3, are pretty straightforward and strict. So it's up to you to say, "Yep, it met all of them." Okay, then final plat. Remember, a subdivision, what you're doing is approving the preliminary design, but after that, all the engineering happens, and all the surveying happens, and setting the pins, preparing the plat and all that. It's called the final plat, that's, comes in, staff reviews that and approves it, and the purpose of the review is to make sure it complies with what you approved. That's what it comes down to.
That's right.
This is what the planning commission approved. So we can send it back, if we didn't get it right.
John?
Yes?
I know we're not allowing PUDs or 10,000 foot, but do we need to have that or some other language for where we do allow higher density?
Higher density PUDs? Or PUDs and higher density zones?
Where we have a higher density, where we're allowing higher densities in the zones that we talked about identifying. I mean, I could see a PUD going in to there, so rather than striking it, should we keep it? It's just not allowed, a PUD, this would be in, in our 10,000 foot, where we allow the higher densities in our zone. Should we still have that, those requirements, see those things?
Explain that a little bit more, when you say PUD, I'm thinking of public utility.
Plan unit development.
A common mistake. Well, it could be, PUD typically involves, if you have 10 acres and you allow four per acre, so you're going to have 40 homes, the PUD would allow a developer to propose setting 10 acres aside as open space, permanent open space, and put those 40 homes on 30 acres, which means their lots are going to be 7,000 square feet or whatever it works out to. But your density of the project is the same. We got to know, we got to know.
No evidence in that.
Well, and that's it. See, that would be in the low density side. If we went to this...
But I think we have to have those rules in place, should that occur down in the other end of town where we're allowing higher density.
That's Kevin's point, is, you know, one of the things about keeping that is, just creates the flexibility, in case someone wants to use it in that zone.
If somebody wants to go in and level lots, do Avenue, and put in a plan utility, that part's a rule.
Or the, and the back home parks are down the right-hand side.
Well, yeah, I mean, from right on through that whole area.
We can still deny it, but I do like that plan, if somebody did want to come in and do something big, keep the flexibility there. It's not going to hurt, we can start right.
I think we would have, the PUD would only be, it got rights on it, so it's only allowed in the higher density zones.
Well, PUD is already sprinkled throughout John's entire code, so he's, we were told to bounce it, he can just leave it in there, make sure it only applies in those zones, yeah.
Yeah, just one change.
It's only an allowed use in that zone, it's not an allowed use in low density, that's easy, yeah.
One of the things to consider on that, I think it's probably a point, is that if a person came in and wanted to do, in one of those higher density zones, do a condominium project, we really, without the PUD, you don't have a way to create that, come to think of it.
Well, we don't have any rules to, to have them conform to either. We have to have some rules in place.
Well, the PUD section had all kinds of rules on what you had to do with the PUD.
Exactly, if we don't strike it completely.
Just all the building codes are going to dictate that, it's going to dictate parking off-street, off-street, the size of streets.
So the question is, we want to keep PUD in the code, but apply it only to the higher density zones, that's the suggestion.
I know Kevin thought that.
Yes. It's a lot of head body.
Okay.
If it lives again.
PUDs are back, all right.
You resurrected it.
Good job, Kevin.
Nicely done, Kevin.
All right. And then it goes through all the final plats and everything that has to come in. Stuff you guys never see even, that just guides us, and more than that, it, it guides Stuff you guys never see even, that just guides us, and more than that, it guides the engineer that's putting it together in terms of the requirements of what they have to submit. So we go to page 31, talks about time extensions. We've already talked about that. Any questions about the subdivision and now PUD process? Thinking back to your own experiences reviewing them, was there anything in those processes you thought might have gone better? And that we've created something to, created a better framework for how you're going to handle, make decisions on those things?
Yeah, it's black and white now.
It's a good start.
Brings a lot of gray.
Well, one of the things that you've done is taken the easement out of the lot size. I think that was one of the problems that I was having, was that made the lot then really smaller than 10,000 square foot, so that helps.
Okay. So process-wise, it sounds like it's all good, straightforward. Okay, then the last one is the comprehensive plan map amendment. Oh, well, we also have the zone map amendment. Remember, we're going to go to two maps. Comp plan map is pretty broad brush. It's kind of a 20-year horizon map, and then the zoning is much more refined. So in the residential comp plan designation, there may be two or three different zones that are within that. So this is changing the comp plan map. And you know, where this will come into play is if Millersburg is successful at the intermodal facility project, we'll be doing a lot of map changes, both zone change, comp plan maps and such, to just accommodate what's, what may happen there. So this just lays out that process. Probably one of the most important things here is looking at those decision criteria, is that if you're doing a comp plan map change, you basically have to go through the same analysis as writing the comp plan in the first place.
Well, this might take a little bit more explanation than that, John, because this commission has only ever known a one-map system.
Yeah.
A lot of cities adopt the one-map system, where the zoning map is the comprehensive land-use plan map as well. But other cities have those separated. And as part of this rezone process, John and I are strongly suggesting that we split that back up in the city, and that we create a comprehensive plan map that hasn't existed here in ages. And there's a lot of good reasons why we want to suggest that, because anytime you want to change the zoning, you don't automatically have to do a comprehensive land plan map change as well, just to change it up.
It's a much more complex process.
Because.
It's hard for you, and it's hard for an applicant, and probably not necessary to do a simple zone change.
Right. A comp plan map should be very high-level. It's just going to say residential, commercial, and industrial, and that's really it. Just those three levels. But in that, we have a lot of zones that implement residential, like residential, rural residential, you know, medium-density residential and low-density residential. All three of those implement that. But if you wanted to change from low-density residential to medium, you could just do a zone change in this new world that John and I are creating. But today, if somebody came in and wanted to do that pursuant to this code, they would have to do a comp plan map change and a zone change. And that gets much more complicated. The criteria is much more difficult. It's much more expensive. So that's why John's added this comp plan map change section. It might look odd to you, because we've never had that before. A zone change was a comp plan map change. They're one of the same, not anymore. Changed it, hoping to, anyway.
Why couldn't you do a conditional use?
That's a different process. That's where it's, a use that's allowed in a zone, but it might have impacts, like the example of allowing a church in a residential zone. But that doesn't have anything to do with the zone change or the comp plan map.
Sorry, I didn't mean to derail you there.
No. God, I love your enthusiasm.
Well, you kind of brought that up on the intermodal thing.
Well, Intermodal submitted an application under the existing system, so they don't have a problem.
Well, I'm saying, I was kind of getting too on there, was that everything within that's already commercial-industrial. There wouldn't have to be any changes for the intermodal thing.
No, it's coming in, it's just a site development. Matter of fact, it's already scheduled for a hearing next month. You guys are going to see it.
Yeah, bad example on my part. But on the other hand, I'm looking at it thinking if that happens, there's probably going to be a demand to think about other land use changes in the area, just because of the opportunity it creates.
Oh, and worst of the intercheck, if it gets put in.
Yep. All right. 34, we have the zone map amendment, classic zone change, pretty typical criterion, public facility services, transportation. The site's big enough, it complies with all the code amendments and that kind of thing. I mean, the code provisions. Text amendments, the next page. And this, remember, the way that code was drafted coming into you today, text amendments would be initiated by you, or the council, or the staff. But still, this is the decision criteria that would be used to review those and to base your decision against those criteria. And now, we're going to allow an applicant. Did we side-vote that to my notes? I think we allow an applicant to propose it. Same deal. And we would, you know, flesh us out a little bit with application requirements, but the criteria remain the same. Okay.
John, just a quick question. On the zone map and the comprehensive plan map amendments, assuming it has to, we go to the planning commission ultimately, that goes to council?
Yep.
Planning commission makes a recommendation to city council.
So we just have that in here, so if someone's doing it, must know it's.
Oh, it's in here. Matter of fact, John, you had a notice of the planning commission recommendation to the applicant, which I thought was really weird. I've never heard of that before. Why would they want, I mean, it goes to the city council ultimately. It's in here. Can't answer your question, Kevin.
In 4.1, in the state, I think it does another portion around 40, since this is telling them what they go through.
Yeah, well, this is basically what goes into an application, how criteria apply. It doesn't have the process piece, which was earlier in the chapter.
No, that comes later.
But it can cross-reference it.
I assume, no, it should be under the decision criteria.
Yeah.
That's only a pilot question.
Yeah, that comes later, under application, review procedures. We're about to cover that in two seconds.
Okay, the next one, in fact, the last application type is annexation. Annexations are type four, they're very arbitrary, decision by the council, but this is a case where you would hold a hearing, make recommendations, the council would make a decision on it. Some jurisdictions, the planning commission doesn't, isn't involved, because technically, it's not a land use decision, it's a boundary line decision. But usually, in fact, it says in here, you have to zone the property that's being annexed, and hence, it falls in your bailiwick to look at it. So it's just all written in.
But that's after the fact.
No, actually, you rezona when it gets annexed.
Either before or at the same time, concurrent with.
So if it's zone if you in the county, it's being annexed, and it's coming in in a residential plan designation, we're going to put the low-density residential zone on it. At the same time, it's annexed.
This is the issue that I'm ever in trouble, right? You no longer go to the voters for this.
Right.
The recent legislation brought this back to council with no vote on the presence.
Yeah.
Because of the portability.
We'd never annex anything.
I see what you're saying. Some cities require a vote of the population, but it's not required by the state.
You can't send it to the voters. You cannot.
No, state still allows you to. It's based on the charter of the city.
Uh-uh. Not according to the wonderful state of Oregon, it's not.
Yeah. Yeah, the legislature preempted that authority with Corvallis.
Which is county property.
Under a home rule argument, but it didn't fly.
So you can't annex an island?
Oh, you can.
No, you can't. You can't put it to a vote of the public.
Yeah.
Council decides it.
There's a lot of stuff in state law that isn't reflected in here. This is just the process, basically.
It just happened in Corvallis and Jefferson, New York.
Yeah. So, you know, annexation basically is either property owner initiated, or an individual can ask for an annexation, or it can be an area where you get what's called a triple-majority annexation, where it has to be a majority of the owners, with a majority of the property area, and a majority of the valuation. If you need all three of those, and you've got six properties, and one person is a holdout, it still goes. Because if the others meet that, the three criterion, majority of ownership, majority of area, majority of valuation. Interesting stuff in state law. Island annexations are.
I'm just looking down automatic.
A decision criteria on A, property of both city limits.
Yeah, so this wouldn't allow an island.
Two sides, three sides.
Doesn't matter. Just about.
Some cities require more than one side.
Yeah, I'm not aware of that here. It's, it's, no, it's just one side. And in fact, it's not uncommon, but I've even seen cherry stem annexations, where you go down a right-of-way, go down a street, and then bulb out with the annexation out here, and you've got this weird little lollipop stem in between. It just, you simply have to abut. That's all statute requires, is a but.
So you can snowball them then?
Yeah. Yeah, just goes out, like that. But again, you know, no one has a right to annex. The council has to find that it's in the public interest to do so. There are criteria built into statute, where the council has to find that there's a compelling reason to do so. There has to be infrastructure availability, or a plan to create the infrastructure, a number of things. Ultimately, it's your recommendation, council, don't make a decision on it.
Kind of like the main domain.
Yeah. Yeah.
Don't talk about that.
Exactly. And there's, there's only two reasons a city can force an annexation. One is an island annexation, where you have a property that's surrounded on all fours, completely surrounded by the city, then the city can annex it, and the other's a health hazard, failing septic tanks, or something like that. You've got to annex it in order to get sewer out into it, kind of thing. Everything else is initiated by property owners' own way. City doesn't initiate. City can go ask, and that happens, but it has to be a willing property owner, basically, in almost all cases. Then we get into general administrative provision. We go to section 4.2. Multiple applications. If a person files an application that has multiple parts to it, like a subdivision with a concurrent zone change and variance for some reason, at the applicant's choice, those can be consolidated into one process, one application, one process. It says that here, that actually reflects state law. Just clarifying the point. We can't hold them out to do three different applications. We can, in the fee resolution, charge three fees for that, or some variation thereof, but that's a financial issue that council deals with. Generalized areas, a city manager can aggregate, if you have multiple decisions or multiple things going on in a particular area, and you say.
That wasn't clear to me. I didn't understand what that even meant.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure what you were trying to say here.
Like, well.
I'm not sure what it meant.
You know what it is? Case in point, I'm thinking of Lebanon. They had a application for a Walmart superstore, that Walmart was the applicant. And next door was a developer doing a mini-mall thing.
Okay.
And they consolidated the hearing process, because it all related to each other. You know, the driveways interconnected, and parking lots, you give them one to the other. Even though it was two different owners, it just, the city consolidated it. Now, they could have come in jointly and filed an application, but in that case, they didn't. But the city consolidated it, because that's what the public expects when they walk in for the hearing. They don't really care about this or that. They just want to talk about the whole big thing. So it just allows an opportunity to do that. And yeah, the language may be clearer. That's the.
I see what you're saying.
So, John, an example would be, let's say, an industrial, an owner of industrial property maybe has two or three different orders coming in at the same time. For individual.
And they each file their own application.
You may want to combine them.
Yeah, you're combining them for the purposes of the hearing.
Right.
But as it says here, they each give an individual decision.
Right.
Ultimately. It's basically just consolidated the public process.
You're just giving the city manager the opportunity to consolidate it.
Yeah. And you're probably going to do that, because that public's going to want to talk about it that way, and you probably are too.
Thank you very much, city manager.
And just be all on the same time.
Right.
That makes sense.
Okay, application forms. We get the forms, the time limit. Now, what this gets into is the 120-day rule. It's this language that basically reflects the 120-day rule. There's a provision in here that some cities have and others don't like it. That's A, under time limit. City staff shall notify the city council of the timing of a timing conflict by the 95th day. So remember the 120-day rule. The city has to make a final decision within 120 days. That includes not only your process, but time for council appeal. It's how you get appealed. Therefore, you really need to act in like 60 to 75 days. And what this is saying is if the planning commission is dawdling and it reaches the 95th day, the council can call it up and just deal with it, if you're not.
In fact, if you flip over to the next page, I think somewhere in here, it says the planning commission can't continue an item more than once. And that's written into the code here, and that's why John did that, is because he's trying to prevent the planning commission from unintentionally filibustering a case and then busting out past the 120-day rule.
Highly unlikely it would ever happen, but this just gives the council a pressure-relief valve if they need to do it. There's a lot of liability for the city if they're under 20 days.
Well, I actually like this, John, because it gives the city council the jurisdictional authority to skip over planning commission if it gets to that point. And that's important, because otherwise, the city council may not be able to do that. They would have to wait for an action from a planning commission.
Right, exactly.
And that just committed one of my cities, and it's become a real big deal.
The odds of this never will happen is incredibly low, but it gives the authority to deal with it if it comes up. Any issue with that?
No, but what about if the city council, right now, we don't have a way for the city council to call up a decision we've made that they disagree with? And there's nothing in there, I don't think, that says they can do that. Is that something that we?
It's up to you. I mean, that can be written in, that they have the authority.
Well, of course, I don't want them to change my decision, but.
Somebody would have to appeal it to them, then they do have. So if there's a problem with our decision, people that had that problem would appeal it to the city council.
Okay, but I'm talking about the city council not agreeing with our decision. Different.
So we dealt with that a year or two ago.
Yes.
And there's nothing in state statute which provides for that.
Okay.
But we take the position that if, in fact, and I advise our council, that if, in fact, they do want to call something up, we may go ahead and do that if they decide they want to do that.
Okay, so it's that you can do it.
Yes, but, you know, it's certainly more clear, and I just take that position because it's not in our code, and nothing in state statute says. But my suggestion is if you want the council to have that authority, I'd prefer to have it in, all right?
All right.
It gives us a little more basis to.
Are you saying now that council can't appeal it?
Well, it's not in the code. What Forrest is saying is that you can still do it by.
Well, I think it should be.
Listen to the.
I've done that. I've done that as a council member.
Yeah.
So I think it should be in.
Yes, and I take that position. Nothing denies it and lets do it, but it's helpful if you can actually bring it in.
Yeah.
And there's nothing in state statute prohibiting that, but.
Would the appeal process be the same thing?
Yes.
Yes, but sometimes it's not appealed.
Right.
She may not be appealed. It's because of the cost to do it, or the.
Well, you have to have standing to do an appeal, and the city council didn't have any standing to be able to appeal it.
Well, you're saying that if a party though wants to appeal, that all parties may feel, and it may be cost 50, where they just need to be able to think about it.
So the city could appeal it just for any reason they want to.
Well, it's not the city appealing, the council can say, we want to take it up.
They assume jurisdiction, yeah.
Yes, we want to make a decision. Now, the question is, I'm sorry to give you these questions, but do you want them to just, do you want them to really have the ability to just take it out of their hands, for you aside, which you probably don't want to do that? Or secondly, once you make a decision, you want to give them the ability to bring it back? Because I think it's within, we still have the 21-day requirement. So it's a tight timeline for us to make a decision on.
Sure.
They just bring back, oh, we could have it as a de novo hearing.
Right.
Have evidence, everything presented.
Or it could be on record.
Yes, entirely, however you. So what we mean by de novo hearing is that you have the whole hearing all over again, and the council hears all brand-new testimony from here, or you can have it on the record, meaning that they have provided transcripts of the evidence that was presented to the planning commission.
So it's really got to be drawn out, yeah?
Well, we're under timeline, though. We've got to get that thing along, because it's in the 120-day rule applies.
Well, and if it's a type four action, then that's, we're just recommending to the.
Correct.
Correct. So that's out of this.
Yeah, and a type four isn't subject to the 120 days unless an applicant filed for it.
Well, there's legislation that's quasi-judicial. The quasi-judicial is still subject to the 120...
If there's an applicant.
It was pretty contentious.
And it's quasi-judicial.
There can't be an applicant. Well, now there can't be because they changed that.
Well, if it's legislative and that's going to... I want that ability. Yeah. I hear in some sense that allowing the council that authority to call up a decision you've made is okay.
At what point?
Well, it'd be right after the 120 days.
So, so they would be listening to it possibly prior to an appeal, so they're jaded at an appeal?
Well, no, so that's why I recommend that the council not... They don't come in and sit at those hearings.
Exactly.
Now, the mayor is an ex-official member, so he may come in with all he needs to do on the record, just simply say, and then it's no conflict this member here, and he can just simply say, "I said he did not listen to the evidence, I did not contribute anything." The initial hearing, yeah, that he's okay. But, but we don't have to want any other council members in here.
Would it be a vote of the council or a council member?
Well, that's another question. So that, very issue came up, we wanted, uh, two thirds, well, three, three people want to do it?
Majority.
Yeah.
Probably, that's going to prevent you from having one city council member who hates the PC and pulls every decision up.
Yeah.
Let's go with three people.
Okay.
But we still have to provide with that timeline. And then the next issue would be, Mayor, I asked you later on this, you had an hour pushing, you wanted a de novo hearing, meaning all that evidence from that period again? Or you want it just to be here on the record, meaning that, you know, the record will be provided, Matt will write up a record of the findings and then present it. It's actually, if you, you know, benefits both ways.
Can we, can we just make the decision, which process, apply?
You could, you could...
You could say either.
You write it, you write it, council may decide either de novo hearing or a hearing on record.
If it's on the record, your arguments would then be lifted up to the city council and they would have to contend with your arguments as well because they would be on the record. If you go de novo, what you did is completely erased and they just start all over.
Brand-new public hearing.
They're not even allowed to listen to what you said or what the public said during your hearing. Your hearing is gone.
It's kind of like a appeals court.
Yes.
Yeah.
Don't reopen all the oral arguments.
So you can go one way or both ways if you want and just say the city council has to clarify when they call it up, if it's going to be on the record or de novo, but then you've lost control of that too.
One of the things I argue, and I'll, just for all respect, that Jim's comment, I've dealt with the city a lot and I've never had to once go before the planning commission because I usually have an attorney or a, a engineer, Dan Watson, Candy Engineering, by my side. It goes strictly to, at staff level, then we have preliminary site review hearing, which we ask somebody from transportation, utilities, street, planner, everybody's there and we make our decisions. And that's one reason I'm trying to, and I, I see where we're going here, but we could almost stop that if we had more at staff level because we're not trained to make some of those decisions, so I'm hoping that that staff level could stop these issues getting to us in the first place before we got into squabble with council. That's where I see more things going on. I can't, I don't, the number of cities that the whole staff argues and fights, we went through a little of that with due respect, it really was, and it was a good change. We kind of went through a little bit of that, but we have a good mesh right now and I'm going to keep it that way.
My recall, the only issue that I recall, have to be observed in the last, I think, year, is where we, you, planning person dealing with a various type issue, I forget what it was, we got long drug out, we got into a tight industry without even realizing it until the last minute. Then, yeah, that's, okay, for the, for the appeal, we had to deal with the appeal, but we're still much, you know, still close to being on that because we were a clock to clock and we're dealing with an issue we've not been able to deal with today, given your comments, your right.
We did have eighteen or so.
We used to.
This is going to be an extraordinary circumstance.
This is going to be a very extraordinary circumstance that we're talking about, but I still think the city councils, the governing body for our city.
That's fair.
So, I think I should, I should log. Well, in hearing council call up, with majority of council vote, write that in here.
So, just a quick, quick comment, looking at some cases that may have been there in the past. You know, I don't think the city at the time had professional planning staff.
They didn't.
Which we do now have. I don't think they had an engineer on staff like we have now. And one of the things I've asked Forrest to start attending because, just smart, I think, is I've asked Forrest to start attending, planning commission needs, because if questions come up, so that he can provide them. So I guess my question would be, knowing that, I would, hopefully, without having those things in place, it would be very rare.
Yeah.
Uh, which is good. And basically the case is we need to have it. So I guess my question would be, really, the only time it may come up would be under type three. I don't think you'd want to be pulling type one, type two. So, you know, if you do address, maybe it's just in that race, because everything else is going, go to, anyway. So, two, two, two problems there is, you know, if you did, it's only going to be addressed in the type three section, but even then, knowing that where we are today, how likely is that? I don't know how many cities have that, because the council could automatically...
Both of you are making similar advice. We're a lot better today than we were eight years ago. We created so many problems for ourselves, we got us in these problems. And we allow people to bring in issues and cater to them and guard ourselves sideways, often dealing with partitions or issues related to partitions and all that, so we created our own problems and got ourselves into it. So, Ed, you're both, and Karen, both, we're, we're...
Yeah.
And I'm malicious.
On your point, so having that one, just sitting on the National Architecture Association committees, and as you point out, planning commission reports to the council. And I can tell you, NFA got some issues with a, that's one of their best committees, that weren't following what direction council, the standard council gave us. That committee was dissolved in Holman Kitten. So there are ways, I think, that council can address if there's issues.
But that's taking care of the people, that's not taking care of the decision.
But they need that ability.
I think they do.
Yeah, I don't think that the, that's, I don't know that it would be possible, but...
I guess my suggestion would be, and again, I've only had it come up once a year or two ago, some units request, I think we put it in, my suggestion would be, you put it in, has to be called up by a core or at least the majority, three, three of the council members, and at that time is the time they decide to call it or they decide at that time whether it's going to be a de novo hearing or a hearing on record. I would really prefer just a hearing on record, just because the record's already prepared and then they can just review the record. They don't have to go through a whole hearing again.
Shouldn't that be council's decision when they decide that?
Yes, that would be council's decision. And again, we take the position that the council has that authority to do it right now unless you folks say we don't have that ability. So council will ask me, can we do it now and say yes, but again, it's unclear as to how we will take, call it back up. Yeah, but if we write in three, we know can't be done. I don't think it's going to happen.
I know.
No, no idea.
Now that we have good staff, now that I'm really attending, now we're going to have professional planners here, I don't think it's going to happen really at all.
Oh, my God.
Well, now that we cut out partitions from coming to these guys, we're not going to have planning permission here, exactly.
You think we're going to work here like planning?
Kevin's going to retire when we're looking for him.
All right.
Can we talk about that for a minute, what you just said? You said, because I, in our old code, it used to be that any administrative decisions were then at least told to us at the next meeting. You know, we had a report saying this is what we did, and that hasn't happened. I'm not saying that you guys, it was before that.
We don't make those decisions anymore.
I, I know, but, so, my point is, is in the future, now that you're going to be doing those kind of things, are we going to be able to have that?
Well, it's not written in the code yet, but he can certainly write it into the code.
I just think it could just be an administrative policy.
Sure, sure.
That, you know, we'll just keep, well, we're going to keep a roster, basically, of applications, and there's no reason you shouldn't see those things.
You're going to publish your decisions.
Something that we've talked about is looking at just doing something online, so that when we have staff decisions, it can be published and it's posted on our website.
Love it. Love it.
So that, you know, you can see that we've got this, this was the decision staff made. And someone's made of this request, here's what it is, but we're going to have staff report anyway.
Sure.
Posted on our website when decisions made.
Yeah. Even staff-level decisions have staff reports, so I have to make sure the criteria are documented.
So it would be on our, so we would have planning, have some, we'll, we'll have a spot on our, on our webpage under planning decisions, whether it's yours or any planning decision, whether it's the staff level or at the planning commission, but we just have full reports on what this decision is so that people can see it.
Okay, so, but to your point at the next meeting, then we wouldn't go over them and you would just expect us to go look at that?
You have to review them rather than, I know that's what a lot of communities do, that's what all the numbers, they'll have that, and then if the commission has a question on it, they can ask it at that.
Okay.
The city doesn't have a email general distribution list. Or, oh, just for, for items of interest? Because I know a lot of larger cities...
To you or to anybody?
No, to the community.
Everybody's house.
Um, we're, we're trying to work on that.
Yeah. Okay, I know several communities that what they'll do, that they're just a city email mailing list, items of interest, and they will send out an email that just says, "Notice of administrative decision. You know, a decision's been made on this case and you can find the information here," just to notify people that something happened.
What's Albany's Bridges? Isn't that the newsletter thing we get from Albany?
Yeah, they don't do that.
We have a planning commission mailing list, can't that be mailed to?
We often have them.
We get other things.
You can have a, just a tab if somebody wanted to sign up for that. That way they aren't getting their inbox filled with junk, you subscribe to it.
Something to thank you.
See, if you need a new website, go on it. Matt says we can delete that stuff if we don't want to look at it.
Let's take a five-minute break.
Let's take a five-minute break.
We're going to take a five-minute break.
We're almost done.
Uh, so, you want to bring up the idea about...
No, I think you should.
So, in reconsideration and the comment that Kevin made on the recall up for three people, our concern is that, say, for example, if you get three people who are either pro-growth or anti-growth, sitting on the council, whatever, whatever you folks decide, you just pull up right away and say, hit the criteria, we're going to vote our three ways, one. Rather than three, I wonder if we should make it unanimous, and Tapika, Matt, John, they think unanimous call might be necessary to stop, you know, some, a group of three just sitting there and saying whatever you folks think. So that was just what I was wondering. Make, is it going to call it up? Because right now, the state statute is really decided, or they can call it up, but if we put some criteria in, and that criteria being to take five council members, just call it up, that may be more important. Because you folks are really established, you know, what the call-up criteria is.
I'm fine with that. I don't think it'll ever happen. I don't think it'll ever happen.
I don't, I don't think it'll ever happen either.
I think so.
Yeah, but we don't know what'll happen if five members...
It's hard to see with our current council, but...
I don't think it's just going to be changed.
Well, that way the council's...
You may want to vote on it.
That way they're at least on the same page for...
Well, I understand that, but that doesn't mean... I mean, you have to look at our group even, and I, this is, you know, we all know, Ray, we're kind of split, and so I think the council actually is sort of that way too, to try to get them half all five. I have a hard time seeing that happen.
Well, Connie, why don't we do this? Let me take a vote. Who would vote for four and who would vote for three?
Three.
Can we do that?
Four and three or five and three?
Four and three.
Four and three.
Are those five councils, those five councils? Unanimous or three?
Unanimous.
Is that appropriate to me, Tom?
I, I think we can just have a show of hands.
Mr. Carter, and this may not mean the hell of anything, but the council, at least this one, I hope in the future, have a pretty good ability to build consensus. They may have varying views, but we have a pretty good ability to build consensus. I hope that we can do that on these kinds of issues.
It's just speaking to the current council though, and we're, that's only speaking for the current council, and we've certainly seen it can be the other way.
Well, it's been my experience, just very seldom ever, council ever does this. So, I'm going to ask for a show of hands, like three, and then another show of hands for four. So if you're in favor of three, hold your hand up. If you're in favor of four?
Four or five?
No, four.
Unanimous.
That's not unanimous.
No, five would be unanimous.
I thought we were talking unanimous.
That's what he...
When did it change?
Before he said unanimous.
Well, I, I, okay.
He said unanimous, right?
Okay.
No use for four.
So maybe if I'm hearing and say, oh, unanimous, you know, maybe suggest how many want three, how many want four, and how many want five? Five being unanimous.
All right. Let's redo the vote then. How many for three? How many for four?
We have four.
And how many for five?
It's more or less a majority.
Two?
Like four.
Four-one.
So four-one, I guess. That's, let's go with four then.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, the last part of this, for the most part, is just walking through the process for each of the four kinds of applications. This is pretty straightforward, other than the fact there's an error on page 40 where it talks about notice of appeal. There is no notice of appeal because there are no appeals for a type one application. So, we'll fix that.
So, question there, what if they don't like the decision by the staff?
Well, you know, type one are so clear and objective. I mean, it's almost a checklist, black and white. You know, they don't like it, their argument's with the checklist, not with the decision. So, you know, at that point, they come back to you and say, hey, you need to change your code or something. This is like a issuing a sign permit. Location, height, dimensions, it's black and white. So there really isn't anything to appeal.
So then basically, if they wanted something different, they wouldn't have to ask for a variance?
Right.
Okay, got it.
Well, or change the code.
Or change the code.
They could ask for a variance, like, change the code, whatever. You know, it's like, guilty permits effectively fall under this, and those aren't appealed because they're all black and white, basically.
Could somebody go to the state and state override something like this?
No. Not yet.
Don't we bring it up?
All right, that's type one. Type two, page 42.
Well, hang on, before you go through that, John, let's also make note of modified conditions. We've added a provision in here where if an applicant wants to modify a condition of approval, John has clarified and I applaud him for it, but he's just telling staff what to do in that case. And in this case, he's saying you have to go back through the type one decision again if you want to change your condition. So, I'm glad he provided that roadmap.
It's all clarity.
Yeah.
It's just things that were missing in the existing code that experience says you're headed to write it down to create clarity.
Yep.
Type two, these are the ones where staff makes a decision, but it can be, but there's notice to the surrounding property owners of the decision, and then they can appeal it up to you.
So home occupation was type one and we're not giving...
We're going to split it.
That's right.
Yeah, we're going to split it between major and minor, so I'll come back with most language for that. Okay, you read through that, it's pretty straightforward, you've got 14 days to appeal a decision and basically what happens, if no one appeals it, it's final. In my experience, when this has happened in communities and they've gone to this kind of system, the number that get appealed is 5%, if that, because these things usually are so minor and so straightforward that it just, it helps everybody to not drag everyone through this big process. Might be to still have the capability to do it if it's important.
So in type two, the applicant can request a hearing?
Yes.
And a neighbor can appeal, and a neighbor can request a hearing? Yeah, there's a lot of provisions in a type two.
So, just a question for council, as John mentioned, the type one is pretty much a checkered box. You go through and check. So, does the planning commission have an interest in seeing type one decisions? Or would you just be interested in seeing type two? Because type two would be really easy for us, since when we set up notifications, you just send the notification, the plan email to the planning commission.
How do you keep track of the type ones?
Same way we do any other application type, they get an application number or a case number.
A file?
And then, we, yeah, we send an approval letter and just, yeah, a file is made, just like every other case.
One of the things that we're going to be doing a lot more, and are already doing a lot more, is actually keeping a database of applications, because that really hasn't existed before. If you wanted to ask us, how many conditional uses did we approve in the last five years? Takes us four days to research it.
Yeah, what?
Just to find the files. So we're going to make sure that doesn't become an issue.
So the only final decision you see the staff sending would be on the type twos, if right, that was.
And that's okay, because if in fact it is appealed to you, you're going to see that final decision anyway. So you're not going to be receiving anything that you should not be receiving, or would not later if you appeal.
But if we wanted to see the type one, where would they be?
Right here.
Well, probably posted online. And this, you know, there's, as John mentioned, they're going to be very straightforward. And they're not, they're not appealable to you.
Right.
So I don't know if there's a need for you in those cases, you know, if you really want to, you know, if you want, we'll do it. But is there a need for it?
Maybe we just want to keep an eye on you. Maybe we just want to keep an eye on staff.
Blank map.
Do you have a real copy of the meeting schedule or?
That's the only reason I'm asking. It's just, you know, the time that it takes.
All right. Type two, the discussion starts on page forty-two. It's more involved because it talks about the notice and all that goes to the neighbors, and they understand what's going on. And then on page forty-four and forty-five, it walks through the process. On forty-five, the conditions of approval. It talks about how conditions can be attached to mitigate potential problems, et cetera. And then the last one there, if there's conditions or anything that needs to be modified, they have to file a new application. Just again, clarifying that point. Type three, these are the ones that you will always see. Talks about 120 days, talks about completeness. A lot of this is just the internal process for us, making the referrals to other agencies, like the county and the waste haulers. I mean, whoever, you know, gets involved in these and you want to hear back from them through any issues, notice. Talks about the hearing, what goes into the notice itself. And then your action talks about on page forty-seven. So you make a decision. That's a written document.
Doesn't it say on here who signs it?
The notice of decision?
Yeah, commission action. It should.
Currently, I send out a notice that's just signed by me, but I have a decision, which is a separate document, that's signed by Jimmy.
Yeah, I want to be clear on that.
Goes with the file.
Yeah.
And you're right, the code doesn't specify that. I just do that as a matter of practice.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty normal, legislative chair.
And we send out the decision to the applicant.
Right.
So they have a list of all the conditions of approval and everything else.
Exactly. I just want to, again, just being...
Sure.
Thorough, want to make sure that's covered. Talks about the council hearing there on page forty-seven, if it's appealed, and just walks through the same thing with council decision and notice and all of that stuff. And then it makes a point that the city council, it's on page forty-eight, appeals from the city council go to the Oregon Land Use Board of Appeals. And it gives the authority for you to attach conditions of approval. Okay, any issues with that? Page forty-nine, we talk about type four. These are the big legislating ones, you know, very, very similar. It's just pretty darn redundant when you look at all of these. It just gets a little more complex with each level, but the basics are the same.
Here you start drawing a distinction, John, between the quasi-judicial type fours and the legislative type fours. If possible, could we scratch published in the newspaper for quasi-judicial actions? Because...
Is it the only place where we have that?
No, you have it for the legislative as well, but legislative makes sense because, and the difference here is, there's two different kinds of type fours in this case. Like there, if somebody was applying for a text amendment, well, that's a bad example.
A zone change.
A zone change. A zone change can be, can be quasi-judicial or it can be legislative. Now, I know those words might be confusing, but what it really means is that if it's quasi-judicial, then it will be heard by the city council eventually, but it's got a different notification requirement, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Because you're notifying the neighbors, and with a legislative act, you don't notify the neighbors because it changes the whole city.
Yeah, I think the fundamental difference is quasi-judicial is judging an application by an individual, as opposed to legislative, which is initiated with citywide. So like a zone change.
How's it with the Strawberry Hill test? And the Strawberry Hill test says that if it's local, then it's quasi-judicial. If it's citywide, it's legislative.
Yeah, you can do that too, pull it down that way.
I just didn't want to notify the newspaper for quasi-judicial, but I did for legislative because the newspaper here gouges us for ads, and I just assume I give them our business.
Fiscal responsibility says...
It may have to be around after a while. It won't be long.
Well, I know you all, every day, read in the Democrat Herald the legal notices and pay attention to the, all the notices about Millisburg land use.
They're charged us like 400 bucks to noticing those things now. It's ridiculous.
Yeah.
So...
You just want to make sure it's charged up.
They charge, you have the paper delivered then.
So really, the only thing legally we need to notice in the paper are those true legislative things. We want to be clear on that.
Have the paper delivered.
That's why I wanted to bounce it off page forty-nine.
We're going to do that.
Sorry, didn't mean to drag that into the whole group.
Can you take the time to explain what you just said?
Probably not.
About legislative, and what does that mean? And then you're talking quasi-judicial. And I went and looked it up, and it still didn't mean a darn thing to me.
Okay, it's...
Absence...
Sorry.
Which also is a type of one. But the, in the context of quasi-judicial, you can think of yourself as judges, quasi-judicial, and you're adjudicating an application by an individual who comes in and says, they're applying for a variance, and it applies to one property, it's one individual, they're asking the city for a special dispensation, and you're judging that.
We're making a determination if the facts apply to the law, basically.
Yep.
And you're, you're saying, here's information, and we're making a rule. It's just like you're sitting as a judge in a trial. Okay? So you take the facts, apply to law, and ruling one way or the other.
Legislative rarely applies to an individual property. It's something that applies citywide. Updating the comp plan policies, writing a new code, adopting a parks master plan. So there's no applicant, it doesn't apply to an individual, and you are not judging it. Sure, you're evaluating it, but you're evaluating it from a public policy standpoint, not from a compliance with code criterion standpoint.
And so you think the legislature, that's the legislative, legislature of the state creates law. That's what you folks are kind of doing. You're, you're creating some code.
Well, city council.
You're making policy.
You know what I think I'm confused about is, right now, we have now type one through four. We didn't have that before. And I think in the past, we had, we mostly did variances. And I believe, and I could be wrong, but those were quasi-judicial.
Yes.
That's correct.
But here, we have variances as a type three.
Which is quasi-judicial.
Which is quasi-judicial.
Okay.
Think of it this way. Quasi-judicial is where you're judging an individual case on an individual property, and it might impact neighbors.
Which is a type three.
Which is a type three. Legislative could impact the whole city, and so it's, it's a much broader brush. Not too long ago, five, six years ago, all legislative action, all type fours were legislative actions across the whole state. If you're doing a zone change or a comp plan change, it was considered legislative. But somebody sued and said, you can't do it that way because then the neighbors had a greater impact from this one change than the whole city did, and so you need to send out notices to those neighbors. And thus came the birth of a quasi-judicial type four. That never existed before.
Okay, well, on our type three procedures, you don't have anything there. But if I go over to four, you have right in sight quasi-judicial. I think that's why I'm confused.
Let me clarify it then in the language.
I think one of the reasons is, if you go back, this is quite, it tells you the procedures are for type four quasi-judicial. If you go back, you see that there's also a procedure for type four legislative.
Yes.
So that's why it's breaking it out in section four. Everything in section three is quasi-judicial.
And let's make a point of that. I'll make sure that says that.
That's correct.
The type four could be either way.
Correct.
Okay.
It's the only one that can go either way. You can't have a legislative CUP, no such thing.
So the other are quasi-judicial.
Correct.
That's where I was confused.
Okay, so those are the process things. Hopefully, they're straightforward. Process. Page fifty-three, we talk about the planning commission hearing. So pay attention to this. It talks about hearing process, how you do it, the action, you continue a public hearing, additional information, et cetera, et cetera. Item B, it says hearing action. It says if you are conducting a hearing in case, in no instance, you could continue it, but you can't continue it more than thirty days beyond the initial hearing date. So this is in here just as a placekeeper to ask you if you like that language or not. No matter what, you're subject to 120 days.
Right.
Deadline. And if we have the 95-day thing earlier in the code, which the council can call it up, if it looks like you're dragging your feet, there probably isn't the need to have this section, which says you have to take action within 30 days. So without objection, I think I'd yank it out. Okay. Uh, talks about keeping the record open. All this stuff is really embodied in state law, which, of course, you all know by heart after taking the planning class. So it's pretty laid out, pretty straightforward. Talks about the hearing procedures down at the bottom.
John, before you go off to page E, that's reaction. You have decision of planning commission on the application. Type two shall be final, let's put the decision on that.
It should.
And then what about one and two? You stand, they can appeal the planning commission. And as a type one, you can't.
No, we're going to fix that.
That needs to be fixed.
I didn't catch that.
Procedures laid out with planning commission hearing. One of the points in here is item I on page fifty-four, where it says staff recommendation. This is up to you. Some jurisdictions do this, some don't, where after the whole hearing is finished, the staff gets to give any recommendations they may have based on what was heard, which often includes, okay, based on that testimony, and you feeling you want this kind of language here, we're suggesting this language. So it just gives a place for the staff to come and help you solidify the decision if you want it.
I would like that.
Yeah, that works.
Okay, we'll leave that in. Okay. Another policy, or this is kind of a policy point. Notice on J, it says close the hearing, and then K deliberate. There's another way to do this, which I kind of like, and that is, you don't close the hearing, you close the receipt of oral testimony. Or, no, you close, you close the receipt of testimony, so it's oral or written. But you leave the hearing open until deliberations are done, and that gives you the opportunity to ask questions, or if something comes up and someone really needs to tell you something, gives you the flexibility to do that without having to go through a process of reopening the hearing, which may mean holding it over and doing new notice. So you literally kind of leave the hearing open until it gets down. You're done with deliberations, the chair closes the hearing, the motion is made, and a vote is taken.
Do you have any objection? That is perfect. That's...
He says it's perfect. You like that?
So what are you saying J would say?
He would say that he's closing the receipt of testimony, but the hearing remains technically open. And then close the hearing after deliberations to make sure that any questions you have, any reason to talk to anybody is satisfied without having to go through the legal rigmarole of reopening the hearing.
But it really makes, Jimmy, you're going to have to make sure you really write her down, people, because they're going to be sitting here saying, but I want to tell you one more thing, one more thing. You know, you're really the gatekeeper of letting them tell you one more thing if you want. But, so that's the only downside. Just as long as you guys solve the person who's running this thing, you're the gatekeeper, you're good.
I agree. I wouldn't do it.
Question to you.
The only reason I think you'd want to do it is if you, as a group, had a question.
Yeah, yeah, right.
And this will give you the capability to ask the applicant a question. Or if you asked a citizen a question, the applicant would have the right to rebut it. And it just keeps that capacity there, which gives you essentially some flexibility if you need a little bit more information.
I think we've actually done that without...
Yeah. We've basically done that, but at what point do you shut it down then?
Before the motion. So the commission finishes deliberations, then you close the hearing.
Right.
And you vote, or you make the motion and vote.
Okay.
Okay, we'll write it that way.
So M should be L, and L should be...
Yeah, what I would do is, instead of saying J, I'd say, close receipt of testimony.
Yep.
And then add a new L, which is close the hearing after deliberation of commission, and then the decision.
Once this is adopted, Jamie, we'll make you a new script that reflects all this. You don't have to worry about it. We'll clean it up for you.
Okay. Evidence, it just talks about evidence and what can be submitted, but you can exclude as evidence if it's irrelevant, unduly repetitious, immaterial, or cumulative, but erroneous admission of evidence, all that good legalese. Keeping the record, which is your staff's responsibility. Making notice of outside facts or whatever that might come up, right, so we just testify and appeal. So this is essentially codifying the way you do good business as a commission. I'll keep a record. Now, this is drafted to say a verbatim record, the proceeding shall be made by written, mechanical, or electronic means.
It says or. We keep it all in your aura.
So the standard is, is to record, but the minutes don't have the detail. You can always go back to the recording if you need to ferret out exact legislative intent or whatever you were doing. Right?
I appreciate that.
See, there's a lot of man-hours right there.
It says the planning commission may set limits on oral testimony.
Yay!
Which I always think is a great idea, especially if you've got a crowd, to say each have three minutes, period.
Yeah.
Okay. And then exhibits. We keep the exhibits and good process there, all tagged with a exhibit number kind of thing. And then review the public hearing by the council, the last part of the company. It just talks about how the council conducts its hearings on appeals. And this is where we would probably figure out how to plug in the council's capability to call up and review a decision, plug it in here somewhere. It's the last page of the code draft.
Yeah, there's no more chapters after this.
So what did we miss? So your next work session is, again, it's...
There was something, there was a bit esoteric that I didn't see in here. Project gets approved, they build it, they're operating for six months, and then they come in and want to change some aspect of that entitlement. Do they just go through the original process again?
Yep.
Okay. I wasn't sure if there was a special process for that, like a modification of land use or anything like that.
I think it's clear, the saying that it has to come back, the saying.
Okay.
Okay, we are scheduled to meet again in the code workshop on February 25, Monday, February 25.
February 13th.
Thirteenth?
Yep.
Darn. Okay.
Nice try, John.
Oh, yeah, one month.
We have a hearing tomorrow at six o'clock. We have one agenda item, and the 13th, and then the 19th, we have another hearing.
So between now and the 13th, we're going to digest this all, redraft it. So expect to get a wad of paper, and throw all the old stuff out.
Are you going to try and do the whole code in its entirety again, or are we chewing on chapter by chapter again?
I don't know.
Okay, we'll see.
You can think about what you want to do. I mean, I'm going to walk back and give you a draft based on everything you said, and I don't know how long it's going to take to review it. Maybe you'll all love it.
Let us know when we can throw the old books out.
Here we go.
So I have my, my list. I just was reading it. Did we include detention ponds in there anymore?
It's in the subdivision standards.
Well, it probably says you have to comply with stormwater department here. We have standards for...
Yeah.
Okay.
Where stormwater needs intention, we don't say detention. We don't necessarily tell them I have these detention ponds.
Okay, okay.
That's what I call mine.
That's what it is.
What do they call it? Pond. Actually, enjoy it.
Oh, it's beautiful.
I cut down all of the... So with that, we have, so we have those two meetings scheduled two weeks apart. Middle of February, end of February, and hopefully at the end of that, we'll be ready to move this thing here.
Now, at the next meeting, we're probably going to talk about maps also?
Okay, we ought to do that, too.
We have to color, like children. We have to bring out crayons and start coloring. We need to color two things. We need to create a comp plan map, and we need to create a zoning map. And I'm working on some, some drafts to throw up on a board and have everybody look at, but we're also going to have a completely blank one that we can put like a dry wipe acetate over it, and everybody can just color on it if you want to make any kind of changes. But we'll have some maps, hopefully, at the next one for us to all look at and talk about. Those are going to be important because we have to understand the land use changes long before anything else, because we need to start working on other documents for the adoption of this. And those will hinge on the impacts, and we won't know the impacts until we all agree what kind of land uses we're going to have and where. And the zone changes that you all agree to could have ramifications on traffic, and we're going to have to look at that, too. But we won't know that until you all take a look at it and tell us what to do.
I don't know much of that.
So, we're going to look at that next time.
So we'll have code draft and the maps. We'll have two scheduled work sessions to work on both of them. And if it's not enough, fine. Keep looking.
When did we last do a billable land inventory?
Did we? Ever?
We were talking about that earlier.
It's in, like, I don't, there's discussion of it in all the work sessions, and for it.
It was...
So we're going to be having a discussion with council regarding the complex. That's one of their goals. So we're going to have that session. And we'll have to update it with just chance we'll be having a discussion.
Jake, what are the two dates again?
So tomorrow?
That's a...
That's a hearing.
That's a hearing. Work session, or workshop work session, the February 13th. Uh, work session, our workshop work session, the February thirteenth. We have our scheduled hearing, February nineteenth, and then the planning workshop, the twenty-fifth of February.
Two thousand, or two thirteen, two nineteen, two twenty-five.
Correct.
Correct.
And those are all on the, the city's calendar, if you forget. The city's homepage at the very bottom is a calendar. You can take a look at that. I added them all. And I'll send you guys reminders. Don't worry. Around the tenth. I could.
Anything else?
On the Google calendar.
It's your, it's your special number. We just created it for you.
Aww.